Hello, Ms. Pachon, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Hello, Vanya and Judy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Hello, Catherine, can you hear us?
Yes.
Hello, Councilman Ashton, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We will now reconvene the special city council meeting. Ms. City Attorney, would you please report the closed session action?
There were two items on the closed session agenda. Item number one, the city council received a status report. And item number two, there was no reportable action, and that ends the closed session report.
Thank you. The special city council meeting is now adjourned. It is 6:31, and I would like now, I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting. City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Before I take role, I would like to inform members of the audience that Councilmember Álvarez and Councilmember Ashton are participating in this meeting via teleconference. Councilmember Álvarez?
Present.
Councilmember Ashton?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Present.
Mayor Portem Pacheco?
Present.
And Mayor Fromeda.
Present. I would like to call upon Greg Welch, the chaplain for the Downey Police Department. Mr. Welch is going to lead us on the invocation. Is he joining us via Zoom? Or is he here?
He was supposed to join us in person.
Oh, perfect. If we can see if he's outside. I will go ahead and I will go ahead and lead us in the invocation. If we can please stand. It is always a pleasure to pray for our city under any circumstance, but certainly under challenging circumstances in light of COVID-19. So let's bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, giving you thanks for the blessings that you bestow upon us. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to come together as city government and our residents. Thank you for the opportunity you give us to serve you, to serve in these seats, and to serve our residents in a manner that is ethical, that is honest. And thank you, Lord, for this meeting. We pray that the decisions that will be made tonight will be made according to your will, that we will continue to serve and represent our community in the best way we can. And Father, we just want to thank you for our police department, our chief, and the leaders within that department, that you would bless them and protect them. We pray for our fire chief and the rest of our fire department, that you would also watch over them and protect them. Please watch over affairs of our city and continue to bless the city of Downey, Lord, as we recover from this terrible pandemic. In your name we pray. Amen. Fire Chief Dan Herlock, would you please give us the honor to conduct the flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. It is my pleasure. We will have three presentations tonight. We have a lot to cover, and I want to say thank you and welcome to the City of Downey residents watching us virtually. It is our hope that as things begin to open up throughout our county and throughout our state, as the numbers continue to decline with COVID-19, as additional vaccinations are distributed and are placed in the arms of many people, that we can also open up our council chambers to our residents. But in the meantime, again, thank you for your patience and thank you for your grace. Sometimes we do have technical difficulties. From time to time, we have experienced those through our YouTube channel. We hope that things go the right way tonight. And I just want to say thank you to our IT and technical assistance team for always being at the ready. So let's go ahead and do some presentations. Perfect. Good evening, and I would like to welcome the family of Mr. Phil Coquinos. And please tell me if I'm pronouncing or mispronouncing your name. Sometimes those of us with great names can get them mispronounced. Mr. Phil Coquinos, he started his career with the city of Downey back in July 2, 1984, as a part-time municipal aide. It quickly became clear the level of dedication and commitment he displayed as he subsequently hired, he was hired on full time in January of 1989. After several years of dedicated work in public works maintenance, primarily within the street maintenance division, Phil was promoted to the position of Street Maintenance Supervisor in March of 2015. In his position as supervisor, Phil has continued to model dedication and professionalism to the crews working under his direction. You can ask anyone in any division of the city, from recreation to fire and police, and I can guarantee you that they have interacted with Phil in one way or the other, and that Phil has helped them out of a jam. It has been a long-running joke in the maintenance division that we refer to Phil as Mr. City of Downey. In fact, we were all convinced that he was married to the city until he married Jill in March of 2017. Since then, he has modeled not only being a model employee, but also a dedicated husband and stepfather and grandfather. Phil and Jill enjoy traveling throughout the country and plan to do a lot in their retirement. Phil's presence and wealth of knowledge of the inner workings of the city will be missed upon his retirement. Phil will be retiring at the end of this month, correct? And we wish him nothing but the very best in all of his future endeavors. Your name, Phil, came to me through various individuals. And it is such a pleasure, when I certainly read your bio and what you've been doing with our city, that I, there was no question that you were the perfect individual for the Mayor's Legacy Award. It is so important in any job that we do, in any capacity, to exhibit the professionalism and the work ethic and the collaboration that you've exhibited throughout your number of years of employment with the city of Downey. And as you've been called Mr. City of Downey, what a pleasure it is to, this evening, to award you the Mayor's Legacy Award in recognition of your selfless dedication and always going above and beyond for others. Your heartfelt efforts and accomplishments have been of enormous value to our community and have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place for all. And should I say also, better streets for all? Thank you for leaving a legacy of service and generosity in our community. Phil, congratulations.
Thank you all, honorable mayor and council people. This has been my life for, you know, 36 years. Come to work, do my job, go home, and I still think about the city when I was going home, waking up at 3:00 in the morning, seeing what the next day is going to be. But it has been a challenge, but it has been a great challenge. And I'd like to, you know, thank everybody, my wife, my daughter Amanda, Jenna, my son Michael. They've been over there, and they've been hearing my stories as I come home. The adventure is not, every day is not the same day. There's always something happening, and that's what made this job great. And I'm going to miss it, but I'm looking forward to the next chapter with my wife, traveling. Greece and Ireland are on the docket next fall. And thank you.
And if I can have the family of Mr. Marco Silva come in? Welcome, Mr. Silva and family. It is a pleasure to meet you and meet your wonderful family. Mr. Silva, let me tell you all a little bit about Marco Silva. This is really a hero story. And when Chief Herlock told me about you, I said, "This is an outstanding hero story that our city of Downey needs to know about, and I need to award you with the Mayor's Champion Award." Let me tell you a little bit about Marco. At approximately 1:30 on February 5 of this year, Mr. Silva was awakened by a loud noise from his neighbor's house. Marco got out of bed and went into his backyard to see what was going on when he realized that his next-door neighbor's house was on fire. As he looked over the fence, he found three of his neighbors were huddled and trapped on the second-floor balcony into his neighbor's yard. Smoke had blocked their access to the first floor and any safe exit out of the house. Their only safety was to take refuge on the second-floor balcony just outside a bedroom that was full of smoke. Wow. Prior to the fire department's arrival, Mr. Silva utilized an A-frame ladder to scale his fence into the neighbor's yard. He then used another ladder to access the balcony and bring the trapped neighbors down from the balcony and out of the harms way. Once down from the balcony, Mr. Silva took them to his house for shelter and safety. What an incredible neighbor. I want to be your neighbor, too. If not for Mr. Silva's decisive action that night, the outcome of his neighbors could have been very different and very tragic. And Mr. Silva, you are the epitome of what makes the city of Downey the special place that it is. Those of us that have been in this city for 10, 15, 20, 30, 40 years, I know I have been here since the 80s. People like you that are considerate and show compassion and concern for your neighbors, caring, you, just with those actions, Mr. Silva, you exhibited the six pillars of character that our children at our schools so much hear about. Trustworthiness, respect, responsibility. And so again, it is my joy and it is an honor to have you here today because it is people like you that make Downey such a special place. And it is a privilege to have you. Thank you, Chief Herlock, for sharing this heroic story with us. And, Mr. Silva, here I award you the Mayor's Champion Award in recognition of your outstanding citizenship and activities enhancing the community of Downey. Your exemplary, and I'm going to add, and heroic efforts and accomplishments have been of enormous value to our community, certainly to your neighbors, and have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place for all. Thank you for being a champion for what is good and what is honorable in our community. Thank you, Mr. Silva. Congratulations.
I'm just grateful that I was able to help. I'm grateful to God that I was able to help my neighbors, especially in a situation like that. So it gave me the strength, the ability, to be able to perform all those tasks. And I'm glad that everything worked out.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you.
And all of you, fire department and everybody. Everybody did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, thank you. Please stay safe. And I'm going to go up there, and we will move on to our next presentation. Thank you. I think that was an amazing story, really heroism in display in our city. And those of our residents that are watching us, that are joining this meeting via Zoom or YouTube, I want to encourage you, if you know of heroic activities, events that have been, that have happened at the hands of individuals in our city, please let us know. Send me an email. Contact my office here at City Hall. We want to recognize those individuals in our city that are going above and beyond. I have two awards this year, the Mayor's Champion Award and the Mayor's Legacy Award. So please keep that in mind. The third presentation we have is the presentation to the city council by the Whole Child. Do we have who is going to be making that presentation?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The executive director for the Whole Child, Costanza Pachon, is online and ready to go. And she'll also provide background information on all the great services they provide to our community.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor Fromeda, Mayor Portem Pacheco, council members, city manager, and city staff, and any other member of the community joining us today. Thank you very much for the time you're giving us today to present an update on the services we provide in partnership with the city and other organizations in the city of Downey to the residents of the city. My name is Costanza Pachon. I'm the CEO of the Whole Child. I do have a presentation. I'm going to share my screen so we can all see it. Can you all see the presentation?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I'm going to continue. For those of you that might not be as familiar with the Whole Child, we are a nonprofit organization established in 1957. We have been around for almost, for more than six decades, providing family housing, mental health, quarantine, and nutrition services to the most vulnerable among our community. Our mission is to help families raise emotionally and physically healthy children and have a place to call home. We serve mostly minority female-led household. As you can see from the chart, most of our family are Hispanic or Latino and African-American in a smaller proportion. Why are the services that the Whole Child provides important? Well, for mental health, one in six children have a mental health disorder or challenging behavior that could be treated, but goes either on diagnosis or untreated. 13% increase in family homelessness in southeast Los Angeles County. And it's increasing due to the pandemic. Every six minutes, an infant is removed from his or her house because of abuse of neglect. Our parenting services are trying to prevent that abuse and neglect. And there is an epidemic of child obesity. We all know that. 37% of low-income children are at risk. So, we are tackling those big issues. What kind of impact, the partnership that you make, the city makes, with The Whole Child brings? So, these are our overall results for the entire city. The Whole Child serves mostly the 26 cities in southeast Los Angeles County, including, of course, the city of Downey. In our last fiscal year, we served almost 4,000 families altogether, almost 9,000 people, including almost 5,000 children. Of that, we served, with housing services, almost 1,600 families that were either experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. Of those, we were able to permanently house 360 families, and we keep them housed. Our families do not fall back into homelessness. We provided almost 45,000 hours of therapy to our clients. And what we want to see is the clients seeing a reduction of their symptoms in their mental health illness or challenging behaviors and improve their functionality. And 50, almost 50% of our clients report that increased functionality, which is much higher than the average for mental health treatments. We also helped 340 families working through the challenges of parenting. Oftentimes, people say, there is not a book. Kids don't come with a book. Well, there's actually a lot of parenting techniques that people most often just don't research or don't know about it. And these parenting techniques are what ultimately help reduce neglect and abuse. And we held over 130 workshops related to either physical education or nutrition education. And our clients are, you know, that participate in our workshop, report 64% increase in vegetable consumption. This is a little bit about our reaction to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's almost a year. It's going to be a year next week, really, when I think all of us were challenged with the safer-at-home mandates. And at The Whole Child, we reacted very quickly. We were one of the first agencies, if not the first one, in mental health that transitioned immediately to health, offering our clients these services safely and not stopping treatment. In the housing area, you cannot stop in-person services. So, we actually reinforced, we reinforced staffers at our shelters, our intake facilities to serve those facing homelessness. We also did a lot of partnerships to deliver food, baby care items, school supplies to families, a lot of partnership with the community to bring needed goods to families in our region. We also transitioned our workshops in nutrition and healthy lifestyle to video series online. And then we restarted in-person mental health services back in May in our own offices, and then back in October at the client's house with all the safety precautions needed. Altogether, we have been able to maintain an 85% to 90% service rate during the COVID pandemic. It's been hard, but our team has been very hard at work to continue to serve the community. Now, this is specifically for the city of Downey. In our last fiscal year, we provided services to 355 Downey families. The breakdown was like this: family housing, so for families facing homelessness, 191 residents received our housing services. 157 Downey children or youth received our mental health services. And seven families received our parent enrichment services or parenting. Most of you might remember that we did have a very successful and large partnership with the Home Fund Grant from 2018 to 2020. And through this grant, we were able to provide sustained targeted assistance to 56 families, altogether 193 residents in the city of Downey. Through this grant, we partnered with the city itself, with TLC and Unified School District to identify families in need that could benefit from this great program. I also provide here for your reference what kind of services we gave them. There was prevention services, rapid rehousing, and motel vouchers. So, for a little bit of background, prevention, of course, is when we are able to stop a family from falling into homelessness. Rapid rehousing is when a family comes to us and they're already homeless, but we rapidly rehouse them in their own rental unit. And motel voucher or crisis housing, when we cannot quickly move a family into a new rental unit, but we provide them temporary accommodations. Recently, in February of this year, we began a new partnership, offering counseling services at the Barbara J. Riley Community and Senior Center for youngs and adults up to 24 years of age. We're very excited about this partnership. Already pretty much booked up all the time, the two therapists that we have stationed at the site on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Of course, we offer the whole gamut of our mental health services here, counseling for anxiety, depression, and especially issues related to mental health challenges due to the pandemic. We're seeing that a lot in our teens especially. So, this was a great partnership that we are creating, and we're seeing great results already by way of the demand that we're seeing. We leave here the number to poll if anyone wants to avail themselves of these services. Lastly, I'd like to, I'm very excited to share with you that we are expanding our presence in Downey. And actually, this year, we're going to be opening our second headquarters. The Whole Child is headquartered in Whittier, in the city of Whittier. And we're going to be opening our second headquarters in the city of Downey. We have recently acquired a site property and going through the motions of permits and what have you for the renovation of the site that we have to do. And I'd like to acknowledge and thank city staff for your help on this ambitious project for ourselves. This is how the site will be looking once we're done with it in some months from now, keeping a beautiful branding of The Whole Child while keeping with the aesthetics required by the city. We're going to be featuring private consultation, pantry, laundry room, computer lab, nutrition and parenting rooms, mail room for families, and office for collocated services with DSF, DPS, Mental Health, Norris, Alito Clinic. So, even a short-term childcare space we're going to have there. An access center, this is what is called, we wish families could really see this area as a safe, supporting area for them as they look for services to help them with the challenges that they might be facing. Again, we closed in December, and we expect to be up and running in September of 2021 with the help of the review process variously. Again, we also want to share that we are continuing to expand in the region. So, together with the Downey site, we're also going to open a whole new complex in Santa Fe Springs. This one is a little bit of a longer term. We expect to be up and running in 2022 because it's a build-up from the ground up. And it's an interim housing facility for homeless and veteran families. Very excited about this. This is in partnership with the city of Santa Fe Springs. So, we continue our tradition of partnering with the cities of the bring most needed resources to the families. We're looking forward to continue our partnership with the city, the relationship with the council members and the staff. Thank you very much for your time and attention, although I'm not sure if there's any time for any questions or if we are...
Thank you, Costanza Pachon. We appreciate this presentation. We are very excited about The Whole Child. We understand, and I know, we are cognizant, all of us, of the effects this pandemic has had on our children, particularly on the mental health of our youth. And as we've discussed in the past, one of my major goals this year is precisely to make sure that we pay closer attention to our youth. I believe that strong communities are engaged communities. And in that manner, we need to look at how our youth are doing. And so, this partnership in providing the mental health counseling services one-on-one to our youth is essential during this response and yet recovery time. So, thank you for this presentation. We are very excited to have you on board. I know that you've made presentation to some of our other committees, our Downey Cares Collaborative, our Clergy Council, also the 1020 Club. And so, this is really significant for our community. So, welcome. I don't know if my council colleagues have any other thoughts or comments about the presentation? Or, City Manager Levis?
Madam Mayor, first of all, I want to thank The Whole Child and Costanza. Actually, we started this relationship several years ago. They've always actually served the Downey area, but we really got into high gear by providing some home funds for this particular issue. One of the things that many times people say, you know, Downey isn't doing enough on mental health, we're not doing enough on homelessness. When you really start breaking down the projects that we're doing, there are a number of things that we are doing. In fact, we do have a veterans' housing homeless project that's moving forward as well. But in addition to that, one of the things that we recognized through our homeless subcommittee is that if you spend the money upfront, for every dollar you spend upfront, you save 10 on the back end. And so, what we wanted to do is make sure that those 193 people served wouldn't end up on the streets. We made sure that we coordinated with the Downey Unified School District, identified those people in Downey. One of the reasons that we wanted to provide direct funding to The Whole Child is that we wanted to get in front of the queue. You know, we wanted to make sure that our residents had an opportunity to access those services. And they've done a great job. They've been a great partner. Super excited with the fact that they're going to be in Downey as well as headquartered. And quite frankly, the mayor's goal to have homelessness, I'm sorry, mental health access services at Barbara J. Riley is short of nothing but miraculous. I mean, it's really something that's going to help a lot of those kids. So, anyway, it's something that we continue to do. We'll continue to work with providers such as The Whole Child, and we'll continue to work on the things that we need to. But anyway, I just wanted to commend The Whole Child for their help in the city of Downey because they've done a great job.
Thank you. Thank you. And thanks for the partnership and support all along.
Yeah.
Councilmember Trujillo, I think you have some comments?
Yes, I just want to say that I have been a fan of The Whole Child and the services that this excellent nonprofit provides to members of not only our community but surrounding southeast cities since Charlene Benado was the Executive Director. And I think she was still at the helm when the city of Downey started this. So, I think the city has made a fantastic choice in partnering up with The Whole Child. And I hope many of our families, if you're listening out there, and if any member of your family you think can benefit from these services, please do not hesitate to come to the Barbara J. Riley Center and simply ask, you know, what services perhaps are available to provide to any member of your family. So, the city is making these services available. It is so good to be part of an organization that takes mental health conditions seriously. So, thank you. Thank you for doing the work.
Thank you so much for your encouraging words.
I just want to add, Costanza, it's nice seeing you. We had the pleasure of meeting when I went to The Whole Child in Whittier. And so, I'm looking forward to the second headquarters here in Downey. So, thank you, and it was a great presentation. I look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you. Hopefully, by the time we're ready, everyone is vaccinated, ready to party, and we can have a wonderful ribbon cutting and see each other, both and celebrating.
Yes, I can't wait.
If I could just ask, is there an age limit to services? Or can anyone, any adult that lives in Downey, show up to Barbara J. Riley and see if they qualify for any of your services? Is there an age limit?
Up to 24 years of age. We're really focused on children and youth through this partnership at this point.
Thank you. Up to 24. I appreciate that.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, we will move on to the next items on our agenda. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you very much again.
Thank you, Costanza. I will move on to city council member announcements, requests for future agenda items, conference meeting reports, et cetera. And I will begin with my far-left councilmember Trujillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, just going through the list of items that our residents brought to my attention, I believe at the last meeting we talked about, street lighting, the fact that it is very expensive, $7,000 plus maintenance. So, we're looking into that issue to see if the city could assist in any of that process. Tonight, there's an important presentation, I believe it's item number 14, which will touch upon street repaving. If I'm correct, there's going to be a presentation?
Councilmember, actually, I discussed this with the mayor earlier. We're going to postpone that for our next meeting.
Very well.
There's some data that we wanted to make sure that was important and included, so we're going to postpone that. In fact, if I could clarify, there's two items that will be postponed to the next meeting, that one and the tree master plan.
Okay. So, just want the residents to know that it is, that we've heard you. We know it's an important item to you as it is to us, your representatives. So, we're looking forward to getting information on the proposed schedule and possible funding so we can repave some of those streets. It's important that our residents understand, as I have come to find out, that there's a difference between the repaving and the resurfacing of our main streets, such as the Firestones, the Lakewoods, the Imperial Highways versus your residential streets. It's a completely different line item. So, I just want to assure you that we are hard at work looking into repaving our streets for you, our residential streets. So, we have not forgotten that. One of the items that came up during the campaign, and I would like to see if the staff could look into, Mr. City Manager, perhaps we could look into, the application process for plans during the... Again, as I come to learn about the city, I understand from colleagues in other cities that they already have technology implemented where people can apply, submit their plans online, pay for the plan check, the permit fees online, and track their plan check progress online, and request building permits, I'm sorry, or inspections online through the city app. I think one thing that the pandemic has shown us is that we need to improve and embrace technology if we're to become a 21st-century municipal government. So, I want to see if the staff could look into, what would it take to do that, to get us to that level? I imagine it's going to take funding, of course. And I hope that you, the residents, understand, as we try to make things easier for you to submit your plans, that we want to embrace technology, but it is costly. But nonetheless, it's something we should start looking towards to hopefully someday bring to Downey. So, with that to Madam Mayor, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. Madam Mayor? Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. Madam Mayor Protem, to my right.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd like to welcome everyone who is joining here this evening. I know right now we can only meet virtually, but I'm hoping in some time near future, we can once again meet in person. But I still appreciate your involvement and your, and you joining us here at our council meeting virtually. I did want to mention a couple of events that I attended. On February 25th, I attended Cal Cities LA Division. Cal Cities is the new name for the League of California Cities, where we rebranded the name to Cal Cities now. But it was a workshop on effective communication in a virtual world. During this last year, a lot of us have been holding many of our meetings virtually. And this presentation was focused on how to present yourself in a virtual world. Because as many of us are learning, lighting and the positioning of your camera is, or your camera on your device is very important. So this was a very informative workshop. And I also had the pleasure of reading to two elementary school classes last week during Read Across America. And I also have the pleasure of reading to third graders this upcoming Thursday over at Rio Hondo Elementary School. It's always a pleasure reading to kids and visiting the kids at the schools. Unfortunately, this year, that was also held virtually over Zoom. But I still enjoy reading to kids, even though there's something about reading to them live, that doing it virtually just doesn't do it justice. So I'm looking forward to next year where we can actually read to the kids in person. And I did want to bring up some matters. I know we've been discussing this quite often, speeding in our city. And I just wanted to thank staff that we now have speed monitors. I don't know the exact term of it, but we have devices on Brookshire in between Imperial and Gardendale to monitor the speed of individuals. I know it's not our officers out there, but I think it makes a big difference because as drivers drive down, they're cognizant of their speed when they see the monitor. And I've noticed that people do slow down. So I want to thank our police chief and staff for implementing that. I think it's made a difference on my, on my street because I live right there down the street. Also, I did want to mention, I received a letter from Yamile Hurtado. Fortunately, the resident did not leave an email or a phone number where I can reach you. So if you're watching us here this evening, if you can please call us at 562-904-7274, 562-904-7274. If you can call me, I can help address whatever concerns you're having, and I can help you with your issues. Again, unfortunately, the resident did not leave their phone number or their email address. So that way I can get ahold of them. And that concludes my comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Councilmember Ashton, do you have comments this evening? Councilmember Ashton, can you hear us?
Sorry, my Zoom doesn't want to cooperate with me there. I have nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Ashton. Councilmember Alvarez, good evening.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor. I just would like to say that thank you to the community for joining us. And I would like to apologize to our bilingual community, particularly to our Spanish speakers. According to the 2019 census, 75% of Downey population consists of, I have asked the city manager and the mayor to have dedicated Spanish interpreter, especially on the submitting options, as they do in most of our neighbor, neighbor cities. Fortunately, City Manager Levis says that there is no budget for SaaS measures. That being said, it will appear to me that this exposes the city to litigation on the basis of violating U.S. Civil Rights laws. Under note, let us remember the regions of the United States founded on previously inhabited land where many languages were spoken. This nation has no official language. We speak European languages across the American continent due to colonization. How can we council members call ourselves representative to all residents if we do not care enough to facilitate language interpretation that will benefit more than half of the population in Downey? We are one of the wealthiest cities in this region. I urge my council colleagues to see the importance of this measure of inclusivity and to collaborate with me in finding a solution to this problem. Second point, I am sorry that we do not have the Culture Commission on the agenda. I spoke with Mr. Levis. I would like him to explain a little bit about this to the constituents so they can understand what's going on with that. And I know that in our city, we have a lot of artists, many dancers, musicians, and et cetera. So I really want to recognize that this diversity. And I look forward to working with you and all the city council colleagues. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if you'd like, I can respond.
Go ahead, City Manager Levis.
It's usually not my job to contradict a council member in terms of discussion items, but in this particular case, I did have a conversation with Councilmember Alvarez about bilingual translation at our council meetings. I indicated to her that if she wanted to have a bilingual person here full time, which is me from the beginning of the meeting to the end, to translate the whole meeting, that she would need to bring it up to the council, which I think she's brought it up today. What I did indicate to her is that we have a federal language access plan in order to prevent litigation, to make sure that we have that in place. So we do have a language access plan. So we have not only that covers Spanish speakers, but our third largest cohort is Korean. So that's another group out there. So it's not the city manager's decision as to whether or not the council wants to go into the process of having a permanent translator at your meetings. That's for the council to decide, not the city manager to decide. Mrs. Alvarez has brought that up. I will, I will leave that to you. Cultural Arts Commission, Mrs. Alvarez has brought that up. I indicated to her as well on that, that, again, those are things that it takes the council to take on. I don't have the authority to initiate a cultural arts commission. That's for the council to consider. I did indicate to Mrs. Alvarez that we have various measures by which we do have access to cultural arts. For example, if there are specific areas that she would like us to entertain, for example, if she wanted to have, teach kids folk medical dance, we have our Parks and Recreation Guide. We can have a class set up. We can do that. We also have our State Gallery that we have funded in town that can potentially do some things there. We have a community theater. We have a theater subcommittee that also meets to program events and cultural events at the city. So if there are things that are, whether there are music or there are dance, those things can be done there as well. If you want arts and crafts, it can be done through our Parks and Recreation Department. Now, the city at one point did have an arts commission that was disbanded, primarily because it wasn't producing art in the city. We've actually produced more art in the last six months than we had previously, and probably in the last six, seven years. So there are mechanisms and ways to get art in the city and provide those things. Now, if the council so chooses that they want an actual commission, another layer to provide that, again, that is not the purview of the city manager, it's the purview of the city council. So those are my discussions with Councilmember Alvarez on this. Again, I just want to clarify that. It's in no means want to disrespect Mrs. Alvarez in terms of our conversations, but I just wanted to make sure that I cleared the record up on that.
Thank you, City Manager Levis. And also, yes, to clarify the record, Ms. Alvarez did mention to us at a previous meeting, the intention and the desire to bring about a cultural arts commission. I believe we have many opportunities as council members to direct staff to create opportunities for our residents. We do have a multicultural community, and our city is represented by many diverse and rich backgrounds and cultures. Having said that, over the last number of years, the city has had the International Food Festival that brings about thousands of people, not just in Downey, but in Southeast Los Angeles. And through that, we also highlight cultural arts and performances by many groups that span from South America, Central America, Mexico. That festivity brings about, as I said, many thousands of people in three different stages. The city has also become very well-known for our Dia de los Muertos, which takes place in late October. And sadly, because of the pandemic, and also because of the construction that was taking place at our Civic Theater and at our library, that event was not able to take place in 2020. However, that particular event has become a very well coveted and well-known event in Southeast Los Angeles County, and has brought about on a stage many diverse cultural musical groups, including the group that Ms. Alvarez mentioned to me she had previously danced with, the Astic Group. And so I think it is important to clarify and inform members of our community that our city is a diverse culturally rich community that looks to broaden the opportunities for everyone. And rather than creating new layers of bureaucracy by the creation of a new commission, the council members elected here can take swift action and can direct the staff to create other programs that can be beneficial to our community, rather than spending time and effort in creating additional layers of bureaucracy by additional commissions that, in my opinion, are not needed. Now, if Mayor Protem Pacheco thinks differently, or my councilmember Trujillo thinks differently, or certainly Councilmember Ashton thinks differently, please, by all means, and we can certainly bring this item up for an agenda discussion at a later time. But I think it's important to clarify and to have this on the record. Having said all this, this is my time for my announcements. And I have to tell you, one of the things that I am very, very happy to be sitting in this chair, and I'm honored and I'm humbled to serve as mayor this year, not every member of the council necessarily gets the opportunity to be mayor of this city. And that is the opportunity we have to speak to children, and the opportunity we have to speak to our youth about the character traits that we want exhibited in our city. And as the Mayor Protem indicated in Read Across America, we have all participated in previous years in person. And what a delight that is. I was so fortunate to have been invited by the vice principal and the principal of our Rio Hondo Elementary, as the third grade class was studying a new unit, and also celebrating Read Across America. They invited me, and they asked if the mayor could go live from the council chambers. That was made possible by the great IT team that we have here. Thank you, IT team. We were here really bright and early one of these mornings, and we were able to highlight the morning for close to 200 third graders. I also had the opportunity to read to Gallatin Elementary fourth graders. And again, these children have gone through so much over the last year. And my kudos and my shout out to every educator out there listening and watching us via YouTube and Zoom. The work that you have done over the last year is nothing more than remarkable. As teachers, and I have many friends and family that are educators, you go into the educating arena because you love children and you want to be in the classroom. This pandemic has completely shut everything down. And as hard as it has been for all of our children, it also has been difficult on the teachers. So thank you for all of the work that you're doing out there for our Downey Unified School children. And thank you, Downey Unified. I know that we continue to navigate through this difficult pandemic, but I am encouraged. As a, as a healthcare worker in my day job, I had the opportunity to be vaccinated back in January. I'm fully vaccinated. And I have to tell you, for those of you that with the new openings of groups that are able to get vaccinated, if you have the opportunity to receive the vaccine, I encourage you to do that. The side effects are minimal. I have not yet turned into an alien, just yet. And I feel, I feel great. I am encouraged by our Kaiser Permanente numbers, by Blue Shield, by the county numbers that are showing increase in vaccinations. I looked at the county public health website, and the latest numbers that are shown for Downey, which had not yet been updated for today, it showed as of February 20th, over 13,000 people in the city of Downey have been vaccinated. That is about 15.4%. And again, in comparison to the surrounding cities in the Southeast, it is a significant improvement. I am grateful to the efforts of Los Angeles County for putting a vaccination mass site in our city. And again, I think we will be experiencing better days ahead. Thank you again to our staff, our police chief, our fire chief, Public Works, Community Development. This city does not run without you. So thank you. And thank you, City Manager and Assistant City Manager, for all of your efforts. For those of you that continue to watch, I know my comments are long. Please bear with me. This is my opportunity to address you. And I've had the opportunity to record many videos about what we're doing. I realize that these are not normal times, and we want to get back to normal soon. I recorded a video, and thank you Police Chief Dean Milligan for you making yourself available to record the video on speed enforcement, and to clarify the record on a lot of items that constituents have called about. That video is on our city website and is also on our city Facebook page. I encourage you to like the page so that you can see updates. I also recorded yesterday. We were very happy to find out that there is additional funding for our emergency COVID-19 rental assistance program. And I think we've been very vocal about that, and maybe there's been some misconceptions about what is available. In the past, one month rent available had been provided. Now, as of now, if you, if you are a renter in the city of Downey, you are eligible to receive up to three months rental assistance. Now, there is an eligibility criteria, and we have to understand this criteria is set by the federal government, and you have to meet that criteria. First, you have to be a resident of the city of Downey. You have to have been impacted by COVID-19 loss of employment, loss of work hours, or have been furloughed in the last year. So again, there is a process. And again, the city of Downey doesn't make it tedious. We just need to be able to follow the steps and the protocol that the government, the federal government establishes for us. So if you know any renters out there that need assistance, that assistance is now gone from one month. that assistance is now gone from one month to three months. If you at some point received that assistance for one month, you need to call the Office of Community Development and say, "I've received the assistance for one month. I am requesting that second and third month." If you have not yet applied, do know that when you apply, and if you are eligible and approved, you will automatically get three months. I don't have any other comments. Also, last, again, I also recorded a library video. Many people have asked, "When is the library opening up?" Everything has been contingent upon LA County guidelines. And we want to open this fantastic library. The curbside pickup, we hope to have that ready later this spring. And with things opening up again safely, we hope to be able to open, do a grand opening for our library later this summer. As you know, I have been doing my monthly mayor's columns, and I'm doing them myself. I don't have anybody write them for me. I write them in English, and I do them in Spanish. And these are printed in the Downey Patriot, and they're also given to the Downey Latino. I don't know if the Downey Latino newspaper is printing them or if they are just publishing them online. So please, I want to make you aware of that. If you have any further comments, questions, concerns, I am always available to you. And last, but not least, my dear Downey community, let me take a drink of water for a second. I wanted to address an issue that has created a tremendous amount of inquiries and concern among our Downey residents. And as your mayor, I think it's important that I address these concerns. The city has received numerous inquiries by residents regarding Councilmember Alvarez and the recent information that was released that became, that was made public in the last few days. I realize this is an important issue, and it is a serious matter. And I want you to hear it from me. The city is in receipt of the information that has been publicly released. And the city has retained an outside law firm to provide this council with advice regarding that information. I also would like to let the residents know that typically, cities do not require background checks on candidates. And there's no legal requirement to do so. However, I have asked our city attorney to look at this issue and to advise the council. This matter is concerning, and this is a serious matter. Therefore, I will not be making any additional comments on this issue. Any further inquiries will be referred to our city attorney's office. Thank you for your emails. I've received many. Thank you for your phone calls. I've received many. Moving on, we have an item on the agenda, a public hearing. And it is to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and change the zone of the property located at 12021 Woodruff Avenue from PB Parking Buffer to M2 General Manufacturing. And this is Community Development. We will introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Downey adopting a mitigated negative declaration and a zone change designation for property located at 12021 Woodruff Avenue, thereby converting the east portion of the property from PB Parking Buffer to M2 General Manufacturing. The hour having arrived, the public hearing is now open. City Clerk Duarte, do you have the proof of publication?
Aye, Dill Mayor.
Can I have a motion in a second to receive and file the publication?
I'll make a motion.
City Clerk Duarte, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protempachecco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometta?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. City Manager Levas, is there a staff report?
Madam Mayor, there is a staff report that will be presented by our City Planner, Crystal Landavazza.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Before you tonight is a request for a zone change and adoption of corresponding mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for redevelopment of an industrial property located at 12021 Woodruff Avenue. The subject site is located on the west side of Woodruff Avenue, south of Stewart and Gray Road, north of Washburn Road. The site is currently occupied by Kirkhill Manufacturing, which is a rubber manufacturing company. On February 17th of this year, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve a proposal to develop a truck terminal. A tenant has not been selected for this site, but the applicant has designed the site to meet the needs of a business similar to FedEx or UPS. As displayed before you, the front of the property facing Woodruff Avenue will be provided with multi-level landscaping through a mix of low-ground cover, medium-height shrubs, and tall trees to create visual interest. The site will be developed with a concrete tilt-up building accented with wood materials, significant window glazing, modulation, mixed textures, and multi-level landscaping. This viewpoint, again, heading north on Woodruff Avenue further shows the enhancement that the new development will provide to the streetscape in this area. The subject site currently has two zoning designations. The first 30 feet along the north and the south 20 feet adjacent to Woodruff Avenue have a PB Parking Buffer designation, while the majority of the lot has an M2 General Manufacturing designation that is consistent with most surrounding properties in the area. In 2008, a comprehensive zoning code update eliminated the PB zone because the intended separation buffers were achieved and accomplished through the development standards that were adopted as part of that code update. Although the zoning category and its standards were eliminated in that 2008 update, the zoning map still contains and reflects the PB zone. The change from PB to M2 will eliminate the discontinued zone from the subject site and result in a single designation for the property. All development projects are subject to some level of CEQA review. In this particular case, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project due to its size. The Planning Commission reviewed the document and reviewed the proposed mitigation before they voted to approve the development project at their February 17th meeting. A portion of this project, approved by the Planning Commission, is requiring City Council approval, the zone change, which is why the mitigated negative declaration is before you tonight. CEQA does require approval from the highest approving body for a project, for a CEQA document. And for the council's general reference, all of the mitigation measures that were applied were put in place to reduce potential construction impacts. So just that temporary portion when the development site is under construction. None of the daily business operations for the actual facility were deemed to need any type of mitigation or cause any impacts to the surrounding area. And with that, this concludes staff's report, and we are recommending that the City Council approve the proposed zone change and the related CEQA document.
Do any of my council colleagues have any comments or questions regarding this report? No, having none. Can I have a motion in a second to receive and file the publication? Oh, excuse me. My bad. Can I have a motion in a second? Oh, thank you. Yes. Can I please take public comment? And again, for those of you that are joining us via Zoom or YouTube, I will open up this item for public comment. This is regarding this public hearing item. For non-agenda public comment, that is coming in just a little bit. This public comment, members of the public wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing item may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record, and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written correspondence to be read into the record?
Not for this item, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have anybody on the phone regarding this particular item? Mr. Herman, please, please go ahead and speak to the item on the agenda. Thank you.
I'm trying. Okay. We want a zoning change, apparently, for the parking to landscaping architecture. That means that the cars that used to park in front and go "Hawk, Hawk", are now going to be a facade. I oppose this, and I think Councilwoman Alvarez opposes it too. Yes, especially after that invasion of her privacy. So again, we want to have a more fluid discussion with Blanca Pacheco Esquire. And why the fuck is this one guy getting this to the exclusion of everybody else on the block? Everybody wants the same thing. One time, Councilman Somp even told me, "These niggers do this when they get paid", or something like that. I was taking a bullet at the time. No, we don't want one property owner to benefit over others. So I make a friendly amendment that every property owner within 500 feet receives a $25 Starbucks gift card as compensation for this multimillion-dollar giveaway of Downey's taxpayer dollars to some campaign donor. You old suckers. That's right. And again, it's just like when you go into Michael's and you shop, and you get caught taking shit. You're taking shit out of the city of Downey and giving it to one of your favorite donors who's getting campaign donations from this developer, the architect, the accountant, the attorney.
Mr. Spindler, stay on topic. Stay on topic, or we will hang up.
Is that you, Mommy Blanca?
No, it's the city attorney.
Oh, that's the fat one, Frometta, yes. So again, don't try to get overly porky with the pork on this project because there's a lot of feeding on this agenda tonight. So what can I do?
Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Mayor.
And before we get to the other speakers, I have to, again, address and apologize to members of the public that may be joining our meeting tonight for the first time. We may have a couple of individuals that are gadflies and that utilize their time to call in and maybe their comments, while protected by First Amendment, may be difficult to stomach and difficult to hear from any of you. Again, we don't condone that type of behavior and that conduct. We believe civility in this public space is important. However, these individuals will continue to call throughout the night. And again, my apologies because some of these calls are laced with profanity. And my apologies to our residents that you have to sit here and listen to that. Go ahead, City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, fat bitches of Downey. It's Herman this time. It's Herman. Regarding 1201 Woodruff Avenue, regarding the campaign architect donors certificate. Why, why do we have to have a zone change, Mommy? What kind of buffer, and it's not a buffet, for you and the developer and the architect to scumbag the residents of Downey for illicit donations for the architectural work that your stupid husband from the planning commission, Mommy?
Mr. Herman, stay on topic, or we will hang up.
Well, I'm talking about the BP versus the M2 Rubber Manufacturer. I'm talking about the BP versus M2 Rubber Manufacturer regarding community development. Now, before you ask me why I oppose, I want to make sure that the invitation of the privacy of this matter results with a physical impact statement by the city administrator officer or the chief legislative analyst that has completed a financial analysis of the report for this development. It's called an investigation of the public right away. So I'm instructing the Bureau of Street Service, the Department of Building and Safety, to work together to investigate whether my remark of illegal parking buffer is a discriminatory issue regarding general managers, campaign donation fraud, and abuse.
Mr. Herman, one more time. Stick to the topic, or we will hang up.
This is regarding W-O-O-D-R-U-F-F. Why are you hanging up on me, Mommy? I'm talking about Woodruff Avenue. And besides, why is the closed caption so invisible? I can't even read or see your faces, especially the stupid cut.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers?
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, Juan Rodriguez. Spanish, please.
Okay, puede comenzar?
Okay. Buenas noches a todo el consilio.
Good evening to all the council members. This is Juan Rodriguez.
Ah, estaba hablando del problema de estar traduciendo la lengua española porque supuestamente nunca tiene dinero para.
Este, ahorita estamos hablando sobre... el reporte número uno en la agenda. Tiene que ver con un cambio de zona en la propiedad del 12021 Woodrough Avenue. Si tiene comentarios sobre eso, podemos tomarlos, y si no, tiene que llamar cuando.
Okay, entonces, okay. No, está bien, está bien. Okay.
Gracias. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Yes, my name is Mark. Hello.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Hi, yes, I am calling because I am very concerned about the development that is going on. I'd like to see the council members open up this item for discussion. I don't, I don't believe that the council is doing that. And I, I am, I am on the website right now and I am looking at the agenda and the agenda is very blurry on PDF format. So I don't understand how, you know, you pray to God and you cannot even get the basics right of having something that is accessible and clear.
Sir, right now we are discussing item number one, public hearing item regarding adopting a mitigated negative declaration for 12021 Woodrough Avenue. Do you have any comments regarding that item?
I, I cannot have comments when I cannot see the agenda. I, I don't, I don't think, I think that the council should have a more open discussion about this item, but before that, they need to put the agenda so it's clear. What are you people doing with city money?
Sir, if you're not on topic, we're going to end this call.
Well, I, I am just telling you, I cannot, I cannot, I cannot see it clearly. It, it's been loading on my computer.
Sir, we're gonna have to cut the call. Thank you.
We don't have any more calls, Mayor.
Okay, I will entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
So ordered by the mayor. Unless there are any comments from the council, I will also entertain a motion in a second to introduce the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Then I will second that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashton. So Councilmember Ashton made the motion. Madam Mayor, Protem seconded. It's to introduce the ordinance, not adopt.
I'm sorry, to introduce.
To introduce, yes, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometa?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Members of the public, now is the time for non-agenda public comment. Once again, there may be people on the line calling and they have comments that are disparaging about us as elected officials and may use inappropriate language. It is very unfortunate and our apologies are extended to our residents who have to listen to this. Unfortunately, because of First Amendment, these individuals are allowed to say these things. This is by no means excusable and we do not condone their choose, their chose, their the words they choose, excuse me, and their inability to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Now is the time for non-agenda public comment. Before we begin the non-agenda public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public participating telephonically that the city's meeting rules contain in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, even if you're participating telephonically. Each speaker shall have three minutes to address the council on issues that are within the city's jurisdiction. Since we're under a federal, state, and local emergency declaration in Los Angeles County, safer at work, and in the community order, I will limit this non-agenda public comment period to 30 minutes pursuant to Downey Municipal Code, Section 2105G. Once again, if members become disruptive or unruly, I will ask our city attorney to please give the, go ahead to terminate, terminate the calls. Members of the public who wish to address the city council regarding non-agenda items may now call our teleconference phone line at 562-299-6622. For those who submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any written correspondence?
We do, Mayor.
And this is for non-agenda items to be read into the record?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and.
The first email is from Davangi Stradman, to whom it may concern. It has come to my attention that you have certain people that represent your city that take it upon themselves to slander and harm in public others that reside in Downey. This practice is disgusting and extremely harming to your city. Is this the type of people you want depicting your city? I live in Orange County and when I come across such blatant representation, it makes me never, ever want to step foot on your soil. You need to investigate a specific person, Catherine Alvarez. Do it before you continue to ruin your city with her behind it. Next, we have an email from Vijay Patel. Ms. Garcia and Mr. Levas, the actions or inactions taken by the city of Downey could forever change the public's perception. The residents of Downey are extremely concerned about Councilmember Alvarez's recently discovered criminal convictions. As a longtime resident of Downey, I am requesting a formal investigation be initiated immediately. In addition, at the conclusion of the investigation, the city council must conduct a public hearing regarding those findings and the fate of Councilmember Alvarez. Councilmember Alvarez's theft and fraud convictions pose a serious problem and a great risk in her ability to serve this city. Her conduct is devoid of the moral character that is needed to honestly represent her constituents. Her behavior constitutes moral turpitude and she must be removed. A combination of her criminal convictions, the actions of her Public Works Commissioner, and her cyberbullying proves she is incapable of representing the people's interest. If we say we want transparency in elected officials, her criminal behavior keeps her from performing the duties of a public servant. Thank you for your time and cooperation. Next, we have an email from Vimal Patel. Good evening, members of Downey City Council and city staff. My name is Vimal Patel and I am a former Downey resident. I grew up in Downey and graduated from Warren High School. Vijay has been a little brother to me. Today, I reside in Texas with my wife and two daughters. I have known Vijay for over 16 years and I am disgusted at what the residents of Downey have done to Vijay. Over the years, I was pleased to see Vijay's growth. He has always treated people with the utmost respect. Vijay's character is not that of a criminal. I am aware of any, I am unaware of any criminal convictions that are on Vijay's record. Over the years, I have seen Vijay give back countless hours to his community through work done as an LAPD Reserve Officer or the many volunteer hours done in Downey. Two years ago, I noticed that the spirit of Downey was changing and not for the better. Growing up in Downey, I was pleased to witness the great accomplishments of city council and staff. Unfortunately, today, the city of Downey has been infected with ideology and people that are incapable of being a distant human being and have personal political agendas not, not becoming of the people I remember as a kid. It is evident that Downey has become just another city in southeast Los Angeles, like Greenwood, Southgate, or any of the other southeast Los Angeles cities. Downey is the last gem in southeast Los Angeles. I hope City Hall protects that gem. And how did City Hall allow a person convicted of fraud and theft to be placed on city council? I stay away from politics, but it appears that Downey is headed in a downward spiral and something should be done sooner rather than later to stop any more damage. I foresee many citizens and businesses darting to the exit. Next, we have an email from Anthony Jones. We, the residents of Downey, are concerned about the newly-elected council member Catherine Alvarez recently discovered criminal allegations and charges. As a resident of Downey, I'm requesting a formal investigation to be assessed immediately. I believe Councilmember Catherine Alvarez's theft and fraud allegations and charges pose problems with her ability to serve our city. She does not possess standards of a community leader and she should be removed immediately. I believe that the combination of her criminal allegation, charges, and her cyberbullying shows that she is incapable of representing our city's best interests. She should be removed from council immediately. We need transparency in our elected officials. Also, Carlos Aranivar, who was appointed by Councilmember Alvarez as her Public Works Commissioner, should be removed as well. He too tried to cyberbully the writer of an op-ed in The Patriot recently and went as far as threatening him on Facebook. That is certainly not what we need in our city. Next, we have an email from Margarita Jimenez. Dear City Manager, I am extremely concerned about the newly-elected council member Catherine Alvarez's recently discovered criminal history. As a resident of Downey, I'm requesting a formal investigation be opened immediately. I believe Councilmember Catherine Alvarez's past theft and fraud proceedings posed a serious problem with her ability to serve our city. She lacks the basic standards of a community leader and she should be removed immediately. I believe that the combination of her criminal history and her cyberbullying shows that she is incapable of representing our city's best interests. We need transparency in our elected officials. Next, we have an email from Joseph Bartolo. My name is Joseph Bartolo and I am a resident of Downey. This city needs to investigate if Catherine is still committing welfare fraud. There is a video evidence that she was playing soccer with a hard coconut ball with other players and yet she is claiming permanent disability. Back in 2017, she had filed for bankruptcy and in 2013, she had committed petty theft. In addition, in 2011, she had committed welfare fraud. She had claimed permanent disability while she is still operating a small business selling marijuana bongs and astic clothing. Catherine Alvarez had harassed me and tried to intimidate me, which is indicative of a person who has no moral grounds. Catherine needs to be recalled. Next, we have a letter from Troy Boucher to the mayor of Downey and District 1, 2, and 5 city council members. I write this brief letter with deep concern about the current climate of our city council in Downey and humbly request action be taken regarding the undisclosed prior behavior, conduct, and actions of our newly-appointed District 3 council member Catherine Alvarez. My name is Troy K. Boucher and have been actively living and participating in Downey for nearly 13 years. I came to Downey in 2017 to serve at a local Christian church as a pastor working with our youth. During that time, I led five trips to Mexico with nearly 300 Downey residents and students to build homes for desperate families in need. Vocationally, I transitioned into healthcare in 2011 and served our community at what is now PIH Health Hospital Downey, while remaining actively involved in serving both Downey and Montebello faith communities. In 2017, I joined the Downey Chamber of Commerce in partnership with PIH Health and was recognized as a 2013 Ambassador of the Year by the council. I have also served, when available, with Rick Rodriguez on the clergy council he established during his last term. I offer this background only to make clear my commitment to my length of time living and faithfully serving here in our diverse and beautiful community. Regarding the purpose of this letter of concern, I am deeply troubled by the recent reports of unethical and criminal behavior that was previously conducted by Councilmember Catherine Alvarez, behavior that includes misconduct against our own local businesses. I would reference the incidents in question that are troubling, but since this list is vast and has now become public, I will not linger on the specifics. Councilmember Alvarez's further participation as an elected representative of Downey is both disgraceful, shameful, and casts a negative light on our otherwise good reputation within the surrounding communities that look to our example. My request to the mayor and the remaining city council members is for these claims to be validated and subsequent action taken to remove Councilmember Alvarez as representative of District 3 if I'm willing to resign from office. Thank you for taking the time to read my letter of concern and for consideration on this matter. Next, we have an email from Christine Dimas. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Christine Dimas. I am disappointed in the way councilperson Alvarez was welcomed and is being treated as a new councilperson. Instead of being kind to another human being, people that work for the city and elected officials that serve the residents of Downey are showing the taxpayers that you are a bunch of council culture bullies. Instead of throwing around a bunch of falsehoods and op-ed statements, you should probably get to the business at hand running the city. If there is something illegal going on with councilperson Alvarez, your general counsel should file with the LA District Attorney's Office Public Integrity Unit whatever violations have been committed. Otherwise, sit down to do your jobs and keep your side of the street clean. General counsel should be advising council that personal opinion about councilperson Alvarez does not have a place during council meetings. I don't think it is appropriate for taxpayers to ask that we all behave and act civil to one another. How shameful. Being kind to one another is popular. Be that person that shows kindness. We rise when we lift others. Be kind to those who are unkind. They need it the most. Choose kindness. Kindness begins with the understanding that we all struggle. I can go on and on with kindness quotes, but I am sure you get the picture. Welcome, councilperson Alvarez. I look forward to a better, progressive Downey city council that can embrace people's difference and struggles. Councilperson Alvarez was elected to serve that part of the community that is being ignored for, for far too long. Get used to her presence. Best wishes, Ms. Alvarez, and thank you for being brave. With all your prosperities and struggles, you are now in a position to make good on your campaign promises. Have at it. We are counting on you. The next email is from Lucy Villalobos. Dear councilmembers, in light of the latest information, I find it only appropriate to request the removal of Mrs. Alvarez immediately. Recall Alvarez. Number one, Councilmember Alvarez must be removed. There is no way that a person with such a record should hold public office in Downey or in any other city. Number two, I have requested for a no-parking sign and to paint the curb red on Vista del Río and Stokes Avenue next to the 5 freeway wall. Ongoing issue. Trash graffiti, graffiti, drug deal, home robberies, and sexual activity. Not fun. Please check with Police Department and Public Works for all records. I believe we deserve to live in a safe and clean city. Please address all issues. Next email is from Jesús Mayón. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Jesús Mayón. I am disappointed in the way councilperson Alvarez was welcomed and is being treated as a new councilperson. Instead of being kind to another human being, people that work for the city and elected officials that serve the residents of Downey are showing the taxpayers that you are a bunch of council culture bullies. Instead of throwing around a bunch of falsehoods and op-ed statements, you should probably get to the business at hand of running the city. If there is something illegal going on with councilperson Alvarez, your general counsel should file with the LA District Attorney's Office Public Integrity Unit whatever violations have been committed. Otherwise, sit down to do your jobs and keep your side of the street clean. General counsel should be advising council that personal opinion about councilperson Alvarez does not have a place during council meetings. I don't think it is appropriate for taxpayers to ask that we all behave and act civil to one another. How shameful. Being kind to one another is popular. Be that person that shows kindness. We rise when we lift others. Be kind to those who are unkind. They need it the most. Choose kindness. Kindness begins with the understanding that we all struggle. I can go on and on with kindness quotes, but I am sure you get the picture. Kindness begins with the understanding that we all struggle. I can go on and on with kindness quotes, but I am sure you get the picture. Welcome Councilperson Alvarez. I look forward to a better progressive Downey City Council that can embrace people's difference and struggles. Councilperson Alvarez was elected to serve the part of the community that is being ignored for far too long. Get used to her presence. Best wishes, Mrs. Alvarez, and thank you for being brave. With all your prosperities and struggles, you are now in a position to make on your campaign promises. Have at it. We are counting on you. The next email is from Kevin Ace. Greetings, Downey City Council. I just have a few questions. How does a person sleep at night knowing they could potentially ruin a person's hard-won and rebuilt reputation after the person faced charges for crimes committed to secure the safety and well-being of their family? What does it say about a community when a large contingent of the haves band together to greedily protect their financial interests during a pandemic? Paying for opposition research on a person fighting for the have-nots? What kind of media outlet allows a person with the most critical of conflicting interests to draft a piece on a person they not so graciously lost to in a critical election? Follow-up. Could that Downish behavior even be called journalism? Or is it that the kind of tit-for-tat we served for a high school slambo? Just a few questions on my mind this week. The next email is from Robert Cavereda. As a resident of Downey since nineteen seventy-eight, I am shocked with the report in The Downey Patriot about Catherine Alvarez. I heard that she was not a person of good values, but this is unbelievable. I'm asking the city to start doing something about removing this person as a council member. It's an embarrassment to the city. I'm getting calls from friends as far as Palm Springs asking me why Downey is allowing this. Please do something today. The next email is from Dan Sob. I'm sorry, Mayor. The next letter is from Fernando Castillo. It was sent in by Dan Sob. As a vested Downey resident, I am concerned about the meritless allegations written by Vijay Patel in The Downey Patriot against Carlos Aranibar, a prominent member of this community. I don't always agree with Carlos, but what Vijay has done is power abuse as a commissioner in the city of Downey. Abuse of his knowledge as a barred attorney and a mockery of our democracy. In the article published by The Downey Patriot, Vijay admitted he's a Downey Commissioner for Building Appeals, appointed during Rick Rodriguez's term. Vijay, Vijay titles the article in The Downey Patriot, "Alvarez Shows Her Allegiance." Yet he omits he is a commissioner and is upheld to the same standards as higher standards than Ms. Alvarez to his current employment as an attorney for the city of Los Angeles. Vijay, if you want to live up to the title of a credible esquire, your character needs to reflect your title. Otherwise, you are not worthy to hold the title of Commissioner or as a city attorney. As you, Vijay, stated in Government Code Section eight, seven, one, zero, zero provides, no public official at any level of state or local government shall make, participate in making, or in any way attempt to use his official position to influence a governmental decision in which he knows or has reason to know he has a financial interest. I have spoken to local Downey residents and they have indicated Mario Guerra has cut a backdoor deal allowing the area on Firestone and Downey to be developed on what is now a Portos Bakery and a five-story office building. Residents are disgusted as some are unaware. Mario Guerra has had an office on eighty-two fifty-five Firestone Boulevard, Downey, California. Other residents are outraged. Former Downey Councilmember Rick Rodriguez's private security company are patrolling Downey, but Downey has had high victimless crimes in the state. Rick is like Guerra or Sharks. Destroying the middle class, taking police officer jobs through the privatization of policing, promoting poverty at the Downey Promenade where so many young adults work to support their families or pay for school, and still come up short because the majority of the jobs are entry-level customer service. It's an insult to our mothers and fathers who work hard to send their kids to good schools. Taking home peanuts for minimum age is not acceptable. Vijay, if you haven't already done so as a member of this community, please resign from your post as Commissioner in District Three. You talk about accountability, citing laws for local officials, but yet you and your gang of ref-raff politicians are destroying our community by finding loopholes that allow you to abide with the verbiage of the law, while allowing you to go fuck wild with intent and [bleep]. The next email is from Samuel Jabanefin. Dear Madam Mayor and City Council, the residents of Downey are deeply concerned about newly elected Councilmember Alvarez. Alvarez has recently discovered criminal convictions. As a resident of Downey, I'm requesting a formal investigation be done immediately. Councilmember Alvarez's larceny and fraud charges pose a serious problem and a great risk in her ability to serve this city. Her conduct lacks the moral character needed to honestly represent her constituents. Her criminal behavior constitutes moral turpitude, and she should be removed from office immediately. She is a disgrace to the city and cannot be trusted to represent our interests honestly. If we say we want transparency in our elected officials, her criminal behavior has keeps her from performing her duties. The next email is from Elise Ramirez. I would like to remain anonymous. I would like to remain anonymous and fear retaliation from Catherine Alvarez, as she has recently humiliated and publicly shamed those that disagree with her. Shaming them on social media, then creating fake accounts telling them to go back to Cuba, and verbally shaming them as racist Trump supporters. This is only a small portion of the bigger picture on how critical it is for Catherine to step down and criminal history needs to be investigated, to be removed immediately. It's obvious she finds ways to get free money without having to earn it like the rest of us. A person with a disability does not sign up to play an intense sport that leaves bruises on the body and causes her to break a leg. She can fool her followers how she fought to overcome poverty, but winning lawsuits and going on disability is not a su- success story. She needs to be removed based on her criminal background and investigated for disabled fraud. How did welfare fraud and theft not be disclosed in the background and investigated? How did a welfare fraud and theft not be disclosed in the H R process? The only real fraud is sitting in that seat as District Three Representative. Catherine shamed all city council members in her political campaign to gain votes by calling them thieves of Downey and went to their homes, terrorizing their families. Yet she claims to now be the victim. She is unethical and it's now a proven fact. Everyone makes mistakes, but we also have choices in life. I do not want my children to think stealing from the government, welfare, and stealing from Michael's is acceptable behavior just because you are going through a rough patch in life. I have known many hard-working immigrants that shame on this type of behavior, including my parents, that take pride earning an honest living to deter from the stigma that immigrants are here, take jobs from Americans, and abuse the welfare system. We should not be afraid to speak publicly, but unfortunately Catherine is an evil person willing to shame and attack our First Amendment right. Please protect our city and most importantly, please protect our youth from seeing this is acceptable.
City Clerk, I do want to make an announcement. I know we are under the federal and state safer work order. And I know I initially indicated we will have thirty minutes. Um, looking at the amount of email correspondence that we have received um, for tonight's meeting, I will extend um, the, the period. Um, and City Attorney, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, um, what I would like to recommend is, um, is that, um, maybe we stop reading emails. We take those for the next meeting and we take some calls and extend another fifteen minutes.
So yeah, that, that's what we will do.
We have a balance of emails and calls.
Thank you. I think that is, that is a wise thing to do. Realizing that there are still a, a number of emails that will have to be, um, held for the next meeting, I want to give every member of our community that has taken the time to write to us uh, about, uh, any, uh, issue concerning them. I want to give them an opportunity to speak. And so, having said that, uh, we will extend the public comment period another fifteen minutes. And those emails that were not read tonight, let's go ahead and hold them for, uh, the next meeting. So if we have, uh, speakers on the line.
Yes, Mayor.
Um, so let me, let me go ahead and read the statement so that we can, uh, be clear. Uh, now, um, members of the public who wish to address the city council regarding non-agenda items may now call our teleconference phone line at five six two two nine nine six six two two. And again, those of you that submitted these comments, if you submitted, uh, your comments in, as I've indicated a few seconds ago, um, we will be reading those additional emails. If your email was not read, um, tonight, it will be read during next council meeting. Uh, let's go ahead and take the first call, please, uh, City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you all for your patience, uh, and for your, um, participation during tonight's council meeting.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking. Sir, go ahead.
Okay. Anyway. You're picking on my body, Alvarez.
Go ahead and disconnect if nothing's coming through.
Yeah, the, the call's unintelligible and cutting in and out, so we should go to the next call. Thank you.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hi, this is Joey Juan Martinez from the city of Downey.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes. So I want to open up real quick by saying, um, to, uh, everyone, I am not Ms. Alvarez's friend. I don't think that she is a progressive. I don't condone voting against instructing, uh, the staff to continue on rent control and appointing establishment commissioners was a bad and terrible anti-progressive move. That said, let's get to the real point. Catherine Alvarez needs to fire, remove, or replace B J Patel from commission. Catherine Alvarez was elected by a democratic process that gave her the seat to the third district, which means that her platform and her values were the majority vote in her district, and therefore she was granted power to make that change. Now, she ran against Eric Pierce, a Trump-supporting carpetbagger, and, uh, who was promoted by Rick Rodriguez, who appointed V J Patel. So they all have the same values, right? So here we go with this. If you were elected and defeated the old values that Rick Rodriguez represented by defeating, uh, Eric Pierce, then it stands to reason that, uh, V J Patel, who represents the same values and was appointed by the same individuals, is also part, needs to be removed because you were empowered to make the change to the old ways and bring in a new change to the platforms you are doing. So, remove V J Patel immediately. If you don't, you will not be, they will be considered anti-progressive and an assault against all the community members who depend on your platform to move forward. Now, here's what I want to say next. Mister Patel has been harassing members of the Downey Dams Club here in the city of Downey and other people to stay quiet, to retract statements. Um, this is coming from, uh, whistleblowers mainly, but I will say this. Why is it that Mister Patel is so critical about silencing people who, who have made public record comments about him being a spousal abuser? Now, I don't know if those allegations are true. He's declining them. I have not seen his beautiful wife come out and make a statement herself, but I will say that he does seem to invest a lot, a lot of time into bullying people into not bringing up that conversation. At the same time, another anomaly happened. Mister Patel gave public record on February twenty-third during public comment. The thirty seconds in which he introduced himself to make his critique disappeared from the public record on YouTube on March, between March, uh, second to March fifth. I submitted a public record asking what happened to those thirty seconds and to identify the I T and for the I T.
Is he, is he a commissioner, V J?
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Uh, good evening, City Councilmembers and Madam Mayor from Metta. My name is Lysa Rivera and I'm a Downey resident and mother of four, a special needs advocate, and I am a domestic violence survivor. I ask you to please forgive me if I start to cry or fall apart during my statement. But what I'm about to share with each of you is difficult, to say the least, and ever challenging, but it needs to be stated and an injustice needs to be addressed. This mayor campaigned, the city council member Alvarez and her commissioner Carlos Aranivas did against V J Patel in this public forum and on Facebook. Who is a deputy attorney who prosecutes such offenders is uncalled for, unethical, and a complete lie. Not only are you making false accusations in a public forum, humiliating someone, trying to discredit them, you're taking away the credibility in the movement against domestic violence and victimizing those that are still victims in the hands of their oppressors today. By undermining their turmoil, their current living situation, their battle against domestic violence, making them second-guessing themselves when to speak up and when not to. I am appalled by your actions. And I am asking that for your assigned commissioner, Carlos Aranivas, to be removed from his position based on his own actions against a ci- a city member without merit. I apologize. But this is difficult for me. I lived in turmoil for thirteen years. And to have someone here and use domestic violence against a fellow citizen of this city against them without merit, it's truly uncalled for. And I feel that this needs to be addressed. And I am putting my own personal business out here so you can understand that not only you're affecting the individual that you attacked in Facebook by bullying, degrading them, demising them, but you're also affecting the victims. The women, they still live in this horrible condition. Have you ever had a gun against your face? Have you ever been beaten up with a broken nose? Do you know what it feels like to be beaten and not know when to say stop? How dare you do this to this poor man? He's a fellow citizen like I am. But I'm here to tell you that I will file a civil suit against you, Ms. Alvarez, and the city of Downey for defamation, harassment, and intimidation if you come after me in any way, shape, or form. I will make myself clear to you today. I will not be intimidated and I will never be a victim again. You cannot use Facebook.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Please state your name and begin speaking.
Uh, Juan Rodriguez, in Spanish, please.
Okay, un momento.
Is that Juan Rodriguez or Barbaro? He sounds like Barbaro.
Juan Rodriguez.
Juan Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Okay, un momentito, por favor. Okay, puede comenzar? Okay, puede comenzar?
Okay, buenas noches al Consilio completo de Downey.
Good evening to the entire City Council.
Aquí estoy mirando que esto es una cacería de bruja contra Catherine Álvarez.
I am watching, and this is una qué, perdón?
Una cacería de bruja.
A cacería?
Witch hunt.
A witch, this is a witch hunt against Catherine Álvarez.
Frometa, usted hizo la investigación, ¿por qué no investiga al administrador de la ciudad de Downey?
Frometa, if you conducted an investigation, why don't you investigate the city manager of Downey for his contract?
Usted no quiere poner un traductor ahí porque no hay dinero, pero si hay dinero para pagarle a este señor más de trescientos mil dólares.
You don't want to have an interpreter at the meeting, but there's money to pay this individual over three hundred thousand dollars?
Le voy a hablar del periódico del Patriota, que ustedes lo patrocinan con dinero de la ciudad, de los taices de nosotros, de las casas de nosotros.
I'm going to talk to you about the Downey Patriot, who you pay with the community's money.
Hay un grupito que son los que están a través de Pierce, son los que le dicen a él lo que tiene que decir en el periódico.
There's a group that tells Eric Pierce what he needs to say in the newspaper.
Pero no se fija en las personas que lo están repartiendo, que son ilegales.
But they don't see the individuals that are distributing the paper that are illegals.
Son cinco drivers, tres son ilegales, y el periódico le paga a esa compañía porque usa ilegales.
There's five drivers, three of them are illegal, and the newspaper pays that company.
Los resueltos a todos. El viernes, vayan a las calles, a la Suba, a las diferentes calles, para el lado del cinco.
I ask all of you on Friday to go to Suba Street over by the five freeway?
Para que chequen dónde está el periódico tirado en la calle, lo tienen en la banqueta, eso es basura.
So that you can see how they toss the paper onto the sidewalk. That is trash.
En Nueva están igual tirado todo en la calle.
In Norwalk, it's the same thing. They are tossed all over the street.
Si este periódico fuera a hablar cosas de verdad para ayudar a la comunidad...
If this newspaper would be such a great newspaper to help the community?
Frometa, ¿por qué usted no agarra ese periódico para informarle a las personas que tienen problemas con la renta?
Why don't, Frometa, why don't you use that newspaper to keep community members informed, those that are having issues with paying their rent?
Y también a los dueños de propiedades que están también con muchos problemas con esta pandemia.
And the property owners that are also having a lot of issues due to the pandemic.
Y ustedes no lo están ayudando.
And you are not helping them.
Yo nunca, Frometa, usted, ni Pacheco, ni al Trujillo, yo les he visto dando flyers.
I have never seen you, Frometa, Pacheco, or Trujillo distributing flyers?
A la comunidad necesitada, ahí en el banco de comida, nunca los he visto ahí.
Distributing flyers to the members of the community at the food bank that are needy?
La Álvarez sí la he visto ahí.
I have seen Álvarez there.
¿Tú sabes por qué ustedes todos les tiran a la Álvarez?
Do you know why you all attacked Álvarez?
Porque la Álvarez es una piedra en el zapato para todos ustedes.
Because Álvarez is a rock in your shoe, all of you.
Por eso ustedes no la quieren ahí, todos no la quieren ahí, pero cada cual...
That's why none of you want her there, none of you want her there.
Tiene que mirarse al espejo y ver la cola que tiene cada uno.
But each of you has to see yourself in the mirror and see the bola?
Cola.
Cola. The tail that each of you has.
Okay. Como mismo el Trujillo dijo en una entrevista...
Just like Trujillo said one time in an interview?
Que su mamá lo mantuvo como el welfare.
That his mother supporting him through welfare.
Y no sean, y no sean falta respeto, Frometa, atienda, atienda a lo que se le está diciendo aquí.
And don't be disrespectful, Frometa, pay attention to what is being said here.
Y Trujillo, tú también, esto no es un juego, Trujillo.
And Trujillo, you too, this is not a game?
Le voy a decir algo. Estoy puesto para todos y más para el administrador porque para él nunca hay dinero.
Perdón, diga otra vez, ¿está qué?
Que estoy, que lo estoy a todos mirando.
I'm looking at all of you and the city administrator because there is no money?
Ajá, porque el administrador nunca, nunca dice que tiene dinero para los programas, para la comunidad.
Because the city administrators says that there never is money for members of the community?
Pero para poner unas estatuas, como una banana que costó, cada estatua costó cien mil dólares, si hay.
But to place artwork in the community, like the banana that costs a hundred thousand dollars?
Que tengan buenas noches. Frometa, trabaja con la comunidad, que no te queremos, okay?
Have a good evening, Frometa, work with the community.
Just a couple of things, City Clerk Duarte. For the gentleman that just called, Mr. Barbaro, the Cuban gentleman from the Eden Rock Apartments, el señor Barbaro, quiero notificarle que este Consilio trabaja día a día para la comunidad. I want to make sure that everybody understands and I want to clarify that maybe you haven't noticed, a lo mejor no se ha dado cuenta, que hemos estado trabajando arduamente para nuestra comunidad. No solamente con la filmación de diversos videos, not only through the filming of various videos that indicate the service to the community that the city is doing, el servicio a la comunidad que se le está dando a esta ciudad, sino que también parte de mi plan como alcaldesa de este año es trabajar trimestralmente con representantes del condado y de la asamblea para dar distribuciones de comida a nivel regional. Maybe you aren't aware that part of my goals as mayor of the city this year is to have regular and quarterly food distribution events. There was one event that was held at the end of January. There will be another event that will be held sometime in April. También he hecho varios videos acerca de lo que se está haciendo para la disminución de velocidad y la seguridad pública y también sobre el programa de rentas y habitacional que mencioné durante el principio de esta junta. So I think that we are doing everything we can to provide information to the community through various channels. Creo que ha sido bastante clara acerca de el esfuerzo que se está haciendo en publicar artículos o columnas en el periódico de Downey Latino y el periódico del Patriota. Una otra cosa, another thing I want to clarify is that the art in public places and the figures that have been said are incorrect. Las cifras que acaba de decir señor Barbaro son incorrectas. Las cifras que se llevaron a cabo para las estatuas del centro de la ciudad vienen de un fondo específicamente dedicado al arte en lugares públicos. Those funds are specific to arts in public places. So again, I think that if there is misinformation, si hay mala información en nuestra comunidad, yo quiero invitarles a que nos sigan en la página de la Ciudad en Facebook, to please follow us in the city's official webpage, Facebook page, as well as my city's official Facebook page. Por ahí hay bastante información veraz que se ofrece a toda la comunidad. Y cuando estamos aquí en el, aquí arriba en estas sillas, when we're up here and all of you are calling and commenting, sometimes as council members, we might tell each other, comment about something on the agenda. We do this. We are here to serve you, estamos aquí para servirles, y de ninguna manera nos presentamos de manera con falta de respeto a nuestra comunidad. Tal vez la vicealcaldesa yo nos sonreamos, compartemos una sonrisa, igualmente con el concejal Trujillo. Desafortunadamente, los otros concejales, como el concejal Ashton o la concejal Álvarez, que nos ven de la pantalla, desafortunadamente ellos no están en pantalla y no los podemos ver. Entonces, yo creo que es importante que haya transparencia. I think it's important that there's transparency. Those of us that are here, you can see us. And these meetings can be a little long, but we are here to serve you. And if we happen to smile at each other or chuckle at each other, it is not because we're being disrespectful to our community, so please understand that. City Clerk Duarte, let's go ahead and take more calls.
Yes, Mayor.
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Frometa, what a great line of lies. It's fucking human, you fat bitch. When our law punishes words, we must examine the surrounding circumstances to discern the significance of words utterance. Just like you heard regarding Deputy Attorney Bully Trujillo, I'm not a fan, but I'm a wife beater. I'm a beater of women because I'm a pussy. Pussy cat, pussy cat, meow, meow, meow. Meow, meow, meow. Besides that, why hasn't Biden fucking put a border up and prevent those children from taking away from the children in our own community that can't fucking eat, Frometa? Don't walk away, you fat bitch. Shut up and hear it. Yeah. You people are too much. The country's first dumb president is troubling. He doesn't want to talk to the public regarding our First Amendment statements employing others that never in the history has a dumb, dumb president, the forty-six dumb, dumb, done anything fucking right. Like you, Levas, you stupid schmuck. Get your hand off your forehead and pay attention, mendigo. Y la otro cabrón, Trujillo. When you go back to the city of LA, tell Mike Fuer. Mike Fuer, are you a cocksucker? Because that's what the cock says when it crowns. When Judas is scary, you beat his wife, you fucking wife beater. And stop picking on the other woman, councilwoman. So fucking what about welfare? Fuck welfare. Fuck Orange County, fuck Southgate, fuck Vernon, and fuck our local government for shutting us down. We have to work. Niggas have to work, Leo. United States versus Baghdadi Zarian. And you, Paul Warren and company, look what they're doing to our public meetings. Where's the transparency, you fuck?
Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Ah, sí, mi nombre es Veronica Del Cid.
Okay, permítame un momentito. Okay, puede seguir? Hello, my name is Veronica Del Cid.
Sí, estoy llamando porque, primero que nada, quiero agradecer a la concejal, a señorita Catherine Álvarez, por su arduo esfuerzo hacia la comunidad.
Yes, I'm calling tonight, first of all, because I want to thank Councilmember Álvarez for her efforts in helping the community.
Sé que son momentos complicados. Sé que ella está tratando de hacer el mayor esfuerzo por la comunidad, pero...
I know these are, permítame, I know these are very complicated times and she's making an effort to do her best for the community?
Como sabemos, desde su inicio, para poder lanzarse como candidata, siempre hubieron obstáculos en su camino y lo van a seguir habiendo porque sabemos que muchas personas...
Okay, permítame, permítame.
...de acuerdo con ella.
Okay, so, as we know since the beginning, when you initiated your efforts to come, join the City Council, disculpe porque no escuché lo último que dijo. Que desde que inició su...
Sí, desde que comenzó su campaña, siempre han habido trabas, obstáculos en el camino y sé que se van a seguir habiendo más obstáculos porque siempre su esfuerzo va a crecer opacado por las personas que muchos se han dado cuenta, no las quieren dejar avanzar, pero ella tiene el apoyo de la comunidad y sé que seguirá trabajando por hacerlo mejor para la comunidad.
Okay, so ever since she ran for City Council, there has been obstacles in the way because there are people that want to push her down, but she has the community's support?
Y en el camino sé que van a armar novelas, sé que van a armar dramas, para poder...
Okay, un momento.
...empañar su camino, pero sabemos como comunidad que ella va a seguir adelante, va, la comunidad al apoyo y por eso es que está sentada ahora donde está.
Necesito que me deje traducir, señora Del Cid. Necesito que me deje traducir porque si sigue hablando, no puedo acordarme de todo lo que dijo.
Oh, discúlpame.
Sí, so she's saying that in her path, there will continue to be drama and obstacles?
Si quiere continuar...
Just like in a soap opera. Mande?
Puedo continuar porque yo creo no alcanzó a entenderme todo lo que dije, pero nomás quiero decir que pues la comunidad sigue ahí en el apoyo, sabemos que muchas personas podrán hablar y decir, pero al final del día, lo que ella representa para la comunidad es muy importante.
Okay, so the community continues to support her and what she does for the community is very important?
Sabemos que este, ella va a tener grandes logros en el camino. Sabemos que ella va a tener mucho en el camino que hacer y lograr aunque las trabas se sigan poniendo en el camino.
She will continue to make great accomplishments along the way and even though there will be traps set up to cause her not to move forward?
Y pues seguimos en el apoyo, hay que seguir adelante. Concejal Álvarez, no te desanimes, sigue adelante en la lucha, que el esfuerzo es la perseverancia de las personas.
Councilmember Álvarez, continue to move forward, keep going in the struggle because your efforts will help you make those accomplishments?
Esperemos que los dramas que se armen en el camino sean razonables y que ellos busquen y den la evidencia que supuestamente ellos quieren mostrar ahora. Esperemos que, que, que todo, como digo yo siempre, todo en estos tiempos, la claridad siempre llega y la luz siempre llega en el camino, entonces la luz llegará. Siempre el que quiera hacer el mal, recibe el mal, entonces ella va haciendo bien por la comunidad, entonces va a seguir recibiendo muchas más cosas por su esfuerzo.
So she made comments in regards to Councilmember Álvarez. She will make progress due to her efforts in helping the... to her efforts in helping the the community
Gracias
Thank you Hi please state your name and begin speaking
Sí mi nombre es el licenciado Castillo Este este yo le quiero decir a la señora Flometa este que es importante que igualmente como usted dijo que iba a conducir una investigación
Okay sir I need necesito que me deje traducir Hello my name is Mr Castillo and I wanna tell Mayor Flometa that just the way she said that there would be an investigation
Este para Catherine Álvarez igualmente se la tiene que hacer a Mario Trujillo
Um that there would be an investigation against Catherine Álvarez there should be one for Mario Trujillo
Y la razón para esto es que cómo es que la señora Flometa va a conducir una investigación contra Catherine pero hay alegaciones contra Mario Trujillo
How can Mayor Flometa conduct an investigation against Catherine when there are allegations against Mario Trujillo
Las alegaciones de Mario Trujillo él es un es un licenciado es abogado para el condado de Los Ángeles
The allegations against Mario Trujillo he is an attorney for the city of Los Angeles
Él defiende a los criminales
He defends criminals
Está bien punto y aparte Este lo que yo quiero decir es que cómo es que Mario Trujillo está faltando el respeto a la ley en el condado de Los Ángeles
What I wanna permítame what I wanna say is how is Mario Trujillo disrespecting the law in the county of LA
A contra una persona él es ofreció una negociación a puerta cerrada
Against against um he offered a plea to a criminal
He offered a backdoor deal to the criminal
Oh okay he offered a backdoor deal to a criminal
Y esto en la señora Flometa no está viendo también la señora Flometa
And this is not being seen by Mayor Flometa
Sí este y el señor este el mentado señor Vijay Patel este él es él es un problema esta ciudad
And and Mr Vijay Patel he is a problem to this community
Este yo sé que los policías los abogados estadísticamente tienen el comportamiento abusivo a sus parejas estas son las estadísticas
I know that the statistics statistics show that people in law enforcement abuse their partners
Entonces el señor Patel no debe ni siquiera atacar a una persona que todavía no es un un comisionador de la ciudad
Therefore Mr Patel should not attack a person that is not yet a commissioner in the city
Este sabemos que Mario Guerra era el dueño del Patriota de ese periódico
We know we know that Mario Guerra was the owner of the Downey Patriot
Y y siguen publicando esto y el otro sigan publicando sigan publicando
And they keep publishing this that and the other continue to publish continue to publish
Y sabemos que el alcalde Rick Rodriguez tenía un contrato millonario con ICE
And we know that former council member Rick Rodriguez had a contract a multimillion dollar contract with ICE
Entonces que no se quieran este fijar en las pendejaditas aquí allá cuando hay un pedote que es Mario Trujillo Mario Guerra la Flometa
Um don't try to nitpick little things here and there when there is a big bigger problem such as Mario Guerra Mario Trujillo Flometa
Todos ustedes están este hasta cierto punto este enojados que el Pierce no ganó pues tanto dinero que sacó y no ganó
All of you are upset one way or the other that Eric Pierce didn't win
Y Mario tiene muchos comités
Mario Mario tiene qué
Muchos comités a lot of committees
Mario has a lot of committees
Comités que le están dando mucho dinero
Committees that are giving him a lot of money
Y hasta dicen que agarró dinero de narcos
And they even say that he received money from the narcos
Así es que Flometa haga su trabajo este como se llama así una persona realista no con mentiras que tenía tres trabajos en la universidad y cómo y cómo es que pasó todas sus clases y tenía tres trabajos a la misma vez
Flometa says that she had three jobs while she was going to the university
Y cuál cómo es que le hizo para pasar todas sus clases
How did she do it to pass all of her classes
Eso no es una eso no es una una narración completa y no es una narración realista como ella le gusta decir que a las personas que pues no tienen sus educación que ellos
That is not a complete narrative Okay ya se le terminó su tiempo gracias
We are over our time
Yes we are
Thank you thank you well ladies and gentlemen my apologies again we have gone over our time this evening and once again I do want to clarify una vez más quiero clarificar para las personas hispanoparlantes que nos acompañan for those of you are English speaking individuals joining us via Zoom or YouTube my apologies I will say the same thing I said earlier at the beginning of our meeting just to clarify for our Spanish speakers that may not have joined our meeting in time estimados residentes de la ciudad de Downey lo que dije al empezar esta junta esta esta noche acerca de la gran cantidad de correspondencia electrónica y llamadas telefónicas acerca de la reciente la reciente sucesos que se revelaron acerca de la concejal Álvarez acerca de su historial criminal quiero hacerle saber que yo personalmente no voy a investigar no voy a estar incluida en esa investigación este concilio no va a estar investigando this council is not going to be investigating what I said earlier is por la razón que estas información se vino a dar a través de diversos diversas fuentes acerca de el las cuestiones criminales que la concejal Álvarez tiene le he pedido a la abogada de la ciudad I have asked the city attorney to move forward le he pedido a la abogada de la ciudad que independientemente de nosotros y de la ciudad haya otra firma de abogados que investigue este asunto para que nos dé consejo a nosotros hacia este asunto que es bastante consternante eso es lo que dije creo que es fui fui clara pero para ustedes que tal vez se incorporaron a la junta más tarde quiero que quede bien claro que yo no la estoy investigando I just wanna really clarify the record we are not doing that investigation the city attorney has will be any additional inquiries will be referred to our city attorney and that a an additional firm has been retained to provide us legal counsel regarding council member Alvarez criminal background that's all that's all that we've said having said that let's move and do the people's business now I would like to is there a motion in a second to close public comment make the motion
A second
City clerk Duarte could you please take off
Yes mayor council member Álvarez
Yes
Council member Ashton
Yes
Council member Trujillo
Yes
Mayor Portempecheco
Yes
And Mayor Flometa
Yes Yes we are now moving to the consent calendar thank you we have an administrative report as city manager Levas informed us earlier that items number thirteen and fourteen on the administrative report will be moved will be tabled for the next council meeting Uh yes thank you thank you thank you I my apologies it's been an interesting meeting and I need to find my place
Item number six on the consent calendar we'd like to go ahead and pull that there has been a language change in the contract that we want to clarify and Mr Asquie our assistant city manager can take care of that once that item has been pulled
Okay perfect and so that's number
Six
Okay sounds good so now is the time for consent calendar items and members of the public wishing to address the city council regarding consent calendar items will may now do so by calling our teleconference line at two nine nine six six two two and for those who submitted comments via email regarding consent those emails comments will be read into the record and those that are wishing to speak on those calendar items will also be able to do that city clerk Duarte did we receive any written correspondence on consent
Uh yes mayor we have two written comments that were submitted the first written comment is from Lee Squire Lee Squire Vietnam era veteran June nineteen sixty-seven through June nineteen seventy American Legion Brea Post Downey High School graduate June nineteen sixty-seven good evening mayor and city council subject formation of Downey Veterans Council number twelve I want to thank city council for formation of Downey Veterans Council this will provide for united voice of Downey's veterans and veteran groups my hope is that veterans stand united and support US Constitution country and community law and order that we speak against attacks of freedom of religion freedom of speech freedom of peaceful assembly and other freedoms that we defend our veteran brothers and sisters and local policing God bless America God bless military veterans God bless local policing God bless freedom of religion The second public comment is from Franklin Dean Uncle Frank I this is regarding agenda item number twelve I Franklin Dean a Downey resident and board member of the Downey based Veteran Support Group courage forward commend Mayor Flometa Mayor Portempecheco and the city council for your plan to establish the Downey Veterans Council this should promote communication between veteran groups city government and our community Those are the two written comments mayor we have some calls Hello please state your name and begin speaking this is consent calendar items only
Yes I'm here to talk about the consent items can I start
Go ahead sir
Yay so let's get to the waste management and how you're trying to fuck people on trash fees Yay I noticed the agenda packet is a little blank here it is there's a blank line number ten a progress resolution blank adjustment by permit services how much more do we have to pay for this fucking shit all we have to do is take the trash put it in a bag along with a couple of dollars and give it to councilman FOB then it's okay now we got our wonderful police chief we never never go against him Motorola solutions we support by the way who the fuck is this Maserati you promised him last year
Mr Spindler please stay on topic
I don't know who that is my name is Squicky Flometa now let's get to number four accept the work for residential strikes thank God finally that item was actually tabled on the presentation but I see the cash is on the table let's take it now yes on number four number five we'll do this park sewer this is for coyotes pigs like Flometa and dogs like me are ours to use the sewer that means we park drain our shit into a hole and you take care of the rest of it so none of us have to dump it in the streets anymore in Venice California Yay if any of you have an RV and you wanna dump your shit right out in the street go to council district eleven in LA city Mr Herman will talk about that later number twelve the formation of a Downey's Veterans Council veterans of what war what kind of war do you have to be a veteran of we're all at war with our own minds stand up and salute the flag of Cuba just like Flometa does number
Hello please state your name and begin speaking
Yes soundable I wanted to know which which number you guys are on number six
We are on consent calendar items right now
Yeah that's what I'm looking at hon
Items two through twelve
Okay so it is gonna be one of those okay so you guys have the award of contract to parking is it that one or which one was it sorry I'm very confused
No number six
The parking logics number six that one has been pulled Okay
Okay that one was pulled so it will be discussed after the consent calendar is approved so you will need oh no you can make your comment now regarding that item go ahead
Okay okay so the the proof of the of the word the contract parking does that include also residents or does that include outside people that is able to get awarded also for that contract
You will need to make your comments the council doesn't respond to questions at this time
Okay 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 so my other question okay for my other questions it will be also for number seven Flometa if you if you talk trash and talk about civilians and address their addresses you will be sued and you be served okay so you cannot that's against the law so don't try to address people's addresses that is against the law
Ma'am please keep your comments to the consent calendar
Hello please state
Mommy I'm next Hi mommy Hi, mommy! Mommy, come up, mommy, ready? Mr. Spindler made a good comment regarding the trash. Run by criminal thugs, trash. Well, well, Miss, well, Miss Pacheco doesn't pick up the trash in her district as much like before. And then regarding the minutes, I'm going to add to that. Fuck the minutes. That's item two. Now let me go to item number four. Move cash. How do you move cash? Well, you, you start new capital improvements that haven't been worked on for the last 40 years until I ask the government to sue you for $22 million to fix the fucking curbs and sidewalks, stupid Levas. Item number five, regarding wilderness park sewer. Well, Mr. Spindler's right. When I go to Venice Beach, they got a canal that runs water to the ocean. So when I unhook my trailer and dump the hose over the side, I flush to hell down with it, that piece of shit woman beater. And regarding item number six, I'm sorry, got pulled like the big cocksucker. Item number eight, the fire chief grants for homeland security. Well, I'm in support of a fire chief. Fuck the fires, fuck the local government, and keep putting out the fires. And also, item number 12 regarding veterans. Well, a week ago, I was out at 1444 Wes Garvey Avenue, Southwest Covina, 91790, in a regular mean that's open to the public. Malcolm Johnson, a veteran nigger, went with Tony Woo Ho. He went with Tony Woo Ho to China. Regarding housing and development, criminal activity, and corruption. Rico, Rico. Ask the stupid attorney up there if he knows anything about Rico. I'm talking to you, you bald fuck.
Mr. Herman, stay on topic.
And, and finally, finally, I'm, I'm on item number 12. God bless Donald Trump. Fuck dumb dumb veterans, stay the fuck out of dumb dumb's path because he's leading us to another war. Fuck Malcolm Johnson of West Covina.
Do we have any more callers?
There was the last call.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second to, uh, close comment on the consent calendar?
Make a motion. We close?
Mayor, Mayor Portem, uh, made the motion. I guess you seconded.
Uh, yes, I'll second. Thank you.
Okay, can we take roll, please?
Councilmember Alvarez?
Um, Mayor, I'm not sure, but I need to abstain for number, uh, two.
This is just to close the, um, public comment period for consent calendar and we'll get to that item. Uh, Councilmember Alvarez?
So, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Portem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometta?
Yes. Okay, now, um, can we go ahead and?
Mayor, can we, um, if there's any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item?
Yes, I was about to do that. Thank you. You, you really keep me on, on, on point. Thank you, City Clerk Duarte. Uh, council colleagues, do any, anyone need to abstain or pull any items? I know Councilmember Alvarez indicated she needs to abstain from, uh, item number two. Councilmember Alvarez, are there any other items?
Yeah, I would like to pull number 12.
Okay.
Um, Madam Mayor, I need to abstain from item number two. Specifically, I was not a council member on October 27th, 2020, and at the appropriate time, I will step out when you discuss item number six, as I am conflicted because I own property in downtown Downey. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. Uh, Madam Mayor Portem?
Nothing.
Uh, Councilmember Ashton?
I'll move to approve the balance.
Okay, I will second that with item number 12 pulled and item number six as well, and Councilmember Trujillo, um, abstaining from number two, uh, the meeting of October 27, 2020, as well as Councilmember Alvarez abstaining from that same one. And if we can take a roll?
Yes, I have, uh, Councilmember Ashton, uh, making the motion?
Correct.
And is there a second? You will second? Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometta?
Yes.
Okay, the consent calendar is approved with Councilmember Trujillo abstaining from item number two, specifically the council meeting minutes of October 27, 2020, and also Councilmember Alvarez abstaining from item number two, uh, specifically the minutes of October 27, 2020. Uh, Councilmember Alvarez pulling item number 12, and, uh, our city manager informed us that they would be pulling item number six. Thank you.
City Manager Levas, uh, can we go ahead and?
Madam Mayor, sure.
Stuff number six.
Sure, I'm going to hand it off to, uh, Mr. Oskway, who will go ahead and detail, uh, the change that we need to make on this before the council takes action.
Thank you, City Manager Levas. Madam Mayor, if I may suggest, approving the item and particularly the, uh, agreement, uh, with Parking Logix as is, with the exception of, uh, section 6.3, which is page four of 10 of Attachment A, that document is the end user acknowledgement and agreement. The city attorney will, uh, come up with, uh, a more appropriate language for that, uh, and we will amend the signature before finalizing it, uh, and providing it for your signature. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Uh, Councilmember Ashton or Councilmember Alvarez, Madam Mayor Portem, do you have any, uh, comments about that?
No, no comments.
No comments.
Okay. Then moving on to?
Take a motion? We taking action on it, right? Yeah. So you can entertain a motion?
I'll entertain a motion for this item.
I'll, I'll make a, a motion.
I'll second?
Second.
Who, who did the second? Councilmember Ashton?
Yeah.
I did.
It doesn't matter, whoever.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo is abstaining from this item, Mayor Portem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometta?
Yes.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Trujillo abstaining.
Thank you. Now, moving on to item number 12.
Yes, um, Mayor, um, Mayor Frometta, so I have something that I, I will send for number 12. I'm just going to read it, um, so you can be aware and all my colleagues, and then I will make a motion for that. So I received this, uh, from Lee. Um, it says March 29, 2021, will be National Vietnam War Veterans Day. It will be the fifth anniversary of, of the observance.
Councilmember Alvarez, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, Mr. Lee Squire has already submitted, um, public comment regarding item number 12, and we had read, read that into the record.
So is the same that I have?
Well, we only allow one opportunity for public comment, so he submitted that to us in the office today.
Okay, no problem, so I'm just going to leave it like that. Then I will, um, make a motion for that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, can we take a roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
I think you might be double muted, Councilmember Ashton. Or problem, with maybe having problems with Zoom.
He's muted.
Can we unmute him? It's gone. It looks like he may be having, um, technical difficulties.
Okay.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Pacheco?
Yes.
Mayor Frometta?
Yes.
And Councilmember Ashton, are you able to unmute yourself to, um, cast a vote? It looks like he, uh, dropped off the call.
Okay, now moving on to?
Mayor, can I make the announcement of the item number 12? Um, with, uh, Councilmember Ashton absent from the vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now, moving on to, uh, we have, uh, one more, um, item, um, is item number 15, and that is, uh, to establish an affordable housing subcommittee and appoint two members of the city council to serve on this subcommittee. Uh, City Manager Levas, who is giving the report for item number 15?
Uh, Madam, uh, Mayor, I will give that report. As you know, the council had a goal setting and in addition to that, we had a discussion on, uh, rent recently in the city, rent control specifically, and one of the things that came out of both of those meetings was the need for an establishment of an affordable housing subcommittee to look at the myriad of choices that the council has before them and, and work to come up with some alternatives for, for the city to create affordable housing in the city of Downey. So today, staff is seeking for the council to select two members to sit on that subcommittee so that we can go ahead and, and start our work in earnest to come up with some choices for the council as a body to consider in the near future. So with that, I would, uh, ask the city, uh, council to go ahead and nominate some folks for consideration for this committee.
I'll make a motion, um, to nominate Mayor Frometta and myself to sit on the Affordable Housing Task Force.
Yeah, I will second that motion. Uh, City Clerk Duarte, could we please, uh, take roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Okay, um, let's go ahead and take roll again.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Ashton? Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometta?
Yes.
Um, the motion, uh, is approved with Councilmember Alvarez and Councilmember Ashton, um, not participating in the vote.
Did, did they both drop off?
You gotta, you gotta treat those as absents.
Absent.
Right.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Alvarez and Councilmember Ashton absent from the vote.
City Clerk Duarte, what I would like to do is take a brief, um, five-minute recess and then come back and take, uh, public comment, um, on this, uh, item.
I'm going to see if we can get them back, um, online, see if they can participate, the two council members dropped off. Give us a couple of minutes, we can, uh, call them and see if they're going to jump on.
Hello, Councilman, Catherine? Can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay, we can hear you, Mr. Ashton. Ms. Alvarez, can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you for joining us back. It looked like we had a slight difficulty with uh with our technical issues here, but I'm glad we're back. Um I would like to rewind a little bit, uh go back to the item number 15. Um we, uh City Manager Levas, you gave us a report, and I will now uh open this item for public comment um before we move forward with the vote, and members of the public wishing to address the council regarding regarding item number 15. And that is about establishing an affordable housing subcommittee um in this uh city and appointing two members of the city council to serve on that. You may now call our teleconference line at 562-299-6622. Um if you've submitted comments via email, your comments will be read into the record. Uh City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any comments regarding this item?
We did not, Mayor.
Okay, do we have any speakers on the line?
We do, Mayor.
Okay, let's go ahead and.
List your name and begin speaking.
Back again, mommy. I wanna talk about the women. Okay, I'm gonna try. No, we can have anybody.
Um just for the record, we can't hear the speaker um saying anything.
Can you hear me now, bitch? Hello? It's very hard to speak when you're conspiring to deny public comment. Constructive censorship is what it's called. All right, wanna keep playing these fucking games. You'll keep getting another two legal claims. No, I want Alvarez on that panel. Hey, and I want the other new guy. He has a pretty face. I want him on there. I don't want the same old tired mistakes on old Ashton and a big fat fucking Frometta. Too many free lunches at the D D's. Or Downey has.
Mr. Spindler, stay on topic or we will disconnect.
That's not my name, ma'am. Did anybody? Is uh is that 54950 violation again? That's the third time in three weeks. The DA's office is gonna be contacted. And nobody signed up with that name, ma'am. Keep fucking up.
Sir, stay on topic or we disconnect.
Okay, sir, it's okay.
Second warning.
My pronoun, however, is they and them. That's what I prefer. I'm transgender.
Mr. Spindler, stay on topic.
I didn't, I don't know what that name is, ma'am. You keep naming names.
Please make your comments on this item or we will disconnect.
That's fine, but you keep fucking interrupting the fucking flow of my mental mind. I'm disabled. I have to talk slowly. Can you mute my fucking microphone?
Go ahead and disconnect if he's not getting onto point. It's been already two minutes.
I'm trying to talk about the rental commission.
Members of uh of our public, it is 9:38 at night, and I deeply apologize for these two individuals that call in and disparage us and use really foul language. Um I have to tell you, it's it's unfortunate. Uh we choose to sit here and serve our community, and it's very unfortunate that individuals uh choose that type of behavior and language to refer to us. Um please, I apologize. We will get to uh the business of the community. Um do we have any other callers, uh City Clerk Duarte?
Uh yes, Mayor Whitwell. Hello, please state your name and begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Benwell, and I'm calling in support of the um creation of Affordable Housing Commission.
Yes, go ahead.
Um I've actually been researching Downey extensively for a school for a project. I'm a political um science student at the UC Santa Barbara, and I found that the Downey is just like many cities across California where the solution is just right in front of their face, and it's creating affordable housing because there are just so many longstanding entrenched inequalities, especially in California, where it's difficult to build anything, and where people are getting priced out of their homes and they're working in communities and they're getting pushed out of state, or in worst-case scenarios, they become homeless. I believe that affordable housing is necessary and is something that should be looked at extensively. Thank you.
Please state your name and begin.
Frometta, can you hear me now?
Please state your name and begin speaking.
It's Herman Herman, my lovely dears, regarding the inequalities both of federal government, state of California government, to understand and recognize that there is a shortage of suitable housing and have set national state goals, want to provide decent housing for all, which has fallen under discrimination, you jackasses. That's the reason why I'm going through this emotional distress with COVID and the loss of enjoyment of life because of COVID and no housing under your housing programs, you jackass, Mr. Levas line motherfucker, SOBs. I'm entitled to compensa- 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 compensatory damages like Mr. Spindler for all the emotional distress you cause us for speaking under the First Amendment of your retaliation against us. I demand housing for all, even for those who are eligible individuals with disabilities and their families who have been segregated, discriminated, and retaliated by your housing, jackasses, who for the longest time, as Mr. Levas' report said, the need, the need, the need, jackass, like Ben Carson told L.A., fucking fix the housing problems, Mr. Jackass, Mayor, faggot, bullshitter, liar. And the same to you, Gavin, hopeless, Newsom, asshole, fucking Sacramento idiot, too. So the world has to change. You need to follow the guidelines that provide housing for all and prevent this so-called Affordable Housing Crisis. For goddamn sake, look at the children sitting on the sidewalks with their mommies and daddies with the sign, Ms. Frometta. Look, Mommy Pacheco, oh, you don't have children. You don't give a fuck. You don't care, Mommy Pacheco. Remember when you were out there all happy and smiling? Now you got that fucking mug covered because you don't wanna provide affordable housing. Now what about that dumb bitch in the screenwriter, that lady that talked about housing and mental health? You haven't done shit for fucking people with mental health. You don't even know what the fuck you're thinking about and doing with state and federal doors because you're fucking stupid like dumb dumb Biden letting in all those children into a country with no housing. Where is the fucking housing? Where? Tell that stupid asshole attorney there, do you have an answer? Ask the jackass manager, do you have an answer? Ask Ms. Duarte, who censors me on the fucking phone, you stupid cunts. I need housing. We need housing. Fuck you, 42 SC 1983, the Bayak.
Mayor, I do have one uh public comment that was submitted for this item. Uh it's a correspondence from Alex Contreras, and it reads, "I want to thank the city council for taking steps to address the issue of affordable housing and urge for the creation of this subcommittee. While the creation of the committee is a good step forward, results must be expected and acted upon accordingly." That is all, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. We certainly agree. Um this is a big issue. Uh we have a state mandate. Uh we have a state mandate to um create over 6,000 units uh in the next several years, and we realize that cities like Downey um up and down our state are struggling with this particular issue. And um there are no easy answers, um but we will be looking into this because we realize uh where the needs are. And um having said all this, I will um if my my council colleagues have any thoughts or comments regarding this item.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make.
Go ahead, uh Councilmember Trujillo.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashton. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion uh to nominate uh myself and you, Madam Mayor, to sit as uh on this Affordable Housing Task Force.
Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. Uh Councilmember Ashton, uh you you were going to say something. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would I would be interested in serving on this as well. Uh if you two, if either of you are unable to make the commitment, look, you know, I'd be willing to serve as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. Again, I think this shows our community um that there is uh a great interest, and we are all committed to ensuring that our community moves forward. Um our city population, you know, the city, the density that we have uh is great. Uh and again, uh based on the mandates and based on the challenges we have before us, uh we need to continue to remain committed and and resolute at finding innovative ideas and making sure that uh this affordable housing uh moves forward. So having said all this, Madam Mayor Protem, do you have any comments? Okay, um Councilmember Alvarez, do you have any comments?
No, I really want to participate and be part of it as well if there's any changes.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. Um is uh you made a motion, Councilmember Trujillo?
I did, Madam Mayor, to nominate you and myself to sit on the task force.
Okay.
Go ahead and second that motion.
Thank you. Um can we go ahead and take a vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashton?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mayor Frometta?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Um and um City Manager Levas, um after a an eventful night and a lot of work ahead of us, uh we put two administrative reports um for the next meeting. I will, before, let let me take that back. Uh in light of everything that we have seen, um I would like to request for staff uh in in Madam City Attorney, I would like to request that we look into the creation of um a code of uh conduct um for our commissioners, our board members, and any individual that is appointed by this council to serve in any capacity representing our city. Um we realize that uh individuals serving in in many capacities, whether it's in committees, boards, commissions, are extension of ourselves, and they also are an extension of our city. And I don't believe, uh up until this point, uh Madam City Attorney and and City Manager Levas and council colleagues, I don't believe our city of Downey has had a code of conduct. I think this has been um a in unspoken um code of conduct, but I believe that uh what we have witnessed uh over the last several weeks uh necessitate uh that we move in that direction. So I would like to request that we come up with that and that we can um implement it um at the next uh council meeting if possible. Um having said that, um if anybody has anything else that they may want to add regarding this.
Thank you to to my colleagues for allowing me to serve on this Affordable Housing Task Force. Um I know that our regional housing needs assessment, and that's where we keep hearing this, close to 7,000 units, right? Our regional housing needs assessment, arena numbers they call them. Um that's a large number of potential units that are going to be built, and it it's my position that that's going to hopefully bring us developers who are going to want to build multiple unit dwellings. I'd like to see if perhaps we can meet uh within the next 30 days to get this work going. And I would like staff to report back on creating uh what's called an inclusionary housing ordinance. And if I understand this correctly, it would create a trust fund um that we can use to build new affordable housing similar to our open art fund, which I believe uh developers can either build new art on their site, right, or contribute to this fund we have, which is used and has been used for the beautiful art that we see throughout our city. So if the staff could look into what it would take to create the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance so we could fund the trust fund that will hopefully help us get the much-needed assets to purchase land that we could then use for affordable housing.
It's it's actually one of the items that we were gonna bring forward, but I I wanted to clarify something. It's an Inclusionary Housing Ordinance is usually not a trust fund. What it is, is it a requirement uh placed on developers to include affordable housing on the number of units that the council sets as a threshold. For example, if you're doing a large development in the town, then it's a requirement that X amount of units become affordable. So it it so it doesn't necessarily provide the funding mechanism, but we're we're gonna discuss that and many other issues, and the the council will have um uh many options to choose from and then sort of bring them over. It's the staff's um direction to to do that. We'll bring it forward, and then we'll we'll detail, you know, um the advantages and disadvantages of various um housing methods, and um and then the the council can can take that and bring it back and present it to the to the full council for consideration.
That's right. So the developers can either build affordable housing as part of their project or contribute to this fund. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, uh Councilmember Trujillo, and I look forward to serving with you. Um and I do look forward to uh gathering in the next 30 days uh to discuss that. And uh City Manager Levas, uh your your comments for tonight.
Sure, not a not a problem. I I'll make them quick. Um you know, typically, you know, at the end of the comments, I I try to address some of the issues that were brought up and uh try to clarify some of them. And so one of the things, you know, there's always this question about, you know, um people directing their comments to me about, you know, budget or something gets on the on the agenda. First of all, I I don't decide what the council, I'm not a council member. You all do the hard work and get elected. It's up to the council to determine, you know, what gets on the agenda and whether or not you want to take action on a particular item. Um you can always address, you know, what you want on the agenda to the city clerk, and she would be happy to to address those issues and put it on for discussion items, or myself. Um the other issue is budget, like uh somehow I have the control of of the budget. As you know, we have, you know, roughly two over $200 million in our budget. It's presented to the council as a body. You all take action on that particular item. Uh if we didn't have categories um within that budget approved, it'd be chaos during the year in terms of how we proceeded. And so uh that said, there's also criticisms that you are not doing something for the community. And and I need to remind folks that we spent over $67 million on public safety, parks, library, theater. Um just tonight, we spent, and you certified and accepted, over $2.3 million in residential streets. You know, um that was on tonight, and it just kind of flew by, and it, you know, nobody says anything about it, but that's $2.3 million in residential streets. So those are things that I think need to be pointed out. We had over $1 million and, or close to $1 million on rent for folks. We spent half a million dollars on the whole child to help people in homelessness and are facing homelessness or mental health. So the idea that, you know, the budget isn't reflective of some of the things that the council is doing for the community is just inaccurate, you know? And so, not that I wanna get in debate with the public, but I think it's important to point out when those statements are inaccurate, and they are inaccurate. And so, the amount of money spent on parks and things that for years people have been clamoring about the conditions of our parks. And we're not too far away from opening wilderness, which will be a real jewel in the city as well. Now, did we have enough money to do everything in the city? Absolutely not, but we're certainly working toward that, and it's part of that budget process. You know, we, in fact, we have a budget subcommittee scheduled here shortly to go over where we're at. And really, the most important thing is that when you're doing these things, that you don't go into debt for future generations of Downey residents in order to pay for this thing, or you can't pay for it. We have identified the funding to do it, we're just refinancing some bonds that will save us money in order so that we can continue to do the creative things that Downey has been known for in the region and continue to do so. But I just wanted to clarify the record on those particular issues that the council has done, and, you know, pretty fantastic job when you think about it. Any one of these individual projects would have been a marquee project for any city, but we have multiple ones, and essentially every park in the city has been touched. So, and that's not to mention the senior checks, the meals, the food distribution, all of those things that we do during COVID as well, providing masks to the pub, face masks to the public, 14,000 of them, when there weren't a whole lot of them going around. So those are the things that we will continue to do, and we'll continue to work hard on those. But I just wanted to clarify for the record that there is a lot going on in the city, and that's a credit to really the council's leadership and to the staff implementing the policy. We are the initiators of the council's wishes, so at the end of the day, I wanna thank the council for their leadership in that. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, City Manager Levas. Thank you, staff. Thank you to my council colleagues for serving together. These are continuing to be challenging times, and thank you to our residents who stayed on with us throughout the duration of this meeting. I will now like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Deputy Thomas Albanese, 41 years old, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. He was killed in the line of duty, and certainly all the lives lost up to this point to COVID-19. A moment of silence, please. Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.